Well, good morning, everyone. It is ten o'clock and I will call this Board Accounting Commissioners Meeting to order on September 17th. We'll start with a salute to the flag, but we have a really special appearance for us today. I would like to begin by acknowledging that September 21st is recognized as International Day of Sign Language. This day highlights the importance of preserving and promoting the use of sign languages for the benefit of the deaf communities worldwide. In that spirit, we are honored today to have Andrea De Racy with us, who will be interpreting the Pledge of Allegiance in American Sign Language. Please join me in welcoming Andrea as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Andrea. That was a treat. Thank you. Okay, now we will move into roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Jeanne Herman. Michael Clark. Mary Louise Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andriola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown. Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Canderas. And I'm Chief Deputy Clerk Kathy Smith. You have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll now move into our invocation and Felix Ortiz will be leading us.
I first want to thank you, each and every one of you, for your service to the county of Washoe. Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask that you empower these people that you've appointed with wisdom, with understanding, insight, to remember always their mission, to provide and sustain a safe, secure, and healthy community where your people can thrive irregardless of race, color, or gender. Lord, I pray that you remind them that you have placed them to serve these people. I pray, Father, that you give them and grant them your wisdom, that they may not move the landmarks that you've established. I do so presenting them to you before the throne of your grace, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into item four, Public Comment Manager Brown.
Is public comment heard under this item? Will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are remade to the commission as a whole, virtual public comment eligible when facilities are available.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk.
First up is Nicholas St. John, followed by Terry Brooks.
Okay, for the record, Nicholas St. John, a living and breathing man. Today I bring this information to you concerning an election from 2020 between Marsha Burke Bigler and Alexis Hill. Well, I'm going to present here on the overhead, so I need the camera to be from the back angle so that everyone who is out there can see the overhead. So if you could please have them switch it to the rear view so they can see this. This is the last half of the race. This is considered normal voting patterns. They need to switch to the rear view camera, please. Have they been instructed to return that to the rear view so everybody can see this? As you can see, this is normal patterns. Alexis Hill, you need to make them have this from the review. This needs to be published and then it needs to be sent out. Are you going to do that or not? Review, return, do this from the return, from the rear?
DA Canderas, yes, please go ahead and we can pause the clock. DA Canderas.
Thank you. You may proceed. We can see it here in chambers.
No, no, I want this broadcast. It's my right to have this submitted to the public. No, stop the clock. I want my time returned.
You may proceed.
No, you're going to stop the clock. Stop the clock and restart with giving my time back. I want this broadcast publicly. You do not have the right, you're in violation of your oath of office by denying me my First Amendment rights for freedom of speech that's going to the public.
Mr. St. John, please proceed with your public comments. You don't have...
No, I do have the authority and you guys are in violation of my rights. Is everybody clear on that?
Mr. St. John, you are at the point of disrupting this meeting.
You're disrupting this meeting. You're disrupting my time.
Mr. St. John, please proceed.
You see this? This is what happens when the votes are actually switched inside the machines. This was, uh, this is about 12,000 votes out of the 53,000 in the second phase. Guys, this is what election fraud looks like. This is what cheating looks like and we demand that you remove these machines. And I will be filing charges against Queen Tyron Hill for violating my First Amendment rights, disruption of my time, and stealing my time that I allotted.
Madam Clerk?
Terry Brooks.
Thank you.
That was Terry Brooks, followed by Troy Rigas.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And by the way, in ASL...
Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry. We're going to pause the time.
Oh, okay.
DA Canderas.
Is there something against the law that I can't stand here?
Mr. St. John, this is a...
I'm not interfering. Go ahead and do your business. Do your business. I'm not interfering.
Mr. St. John, please sit down. Thank you so much. You don't get to try to intimidate this board. Please sit down, Mr. St. John. Thank you. Mr. St. John, I don't want to ask you to leave because I know you want to enjoy this meeting. Please sit down. You, Mr. St. John, okay, you'll need to leave this meeting, sir. And you can walk out. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time today.
Madam Chair, we could take a recess.
Okay, we're going to take a recess. Thank you very much.
I would ask that all commissioners leave the chambers in accordance with the rules of the BCC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Troy Regus.
Okay, let's try this again. Good morning, my name is Terry Brooks. And ASL, that's T E R R Y B R O O K S. Good morning, it's me Terry Brooks again, and today I'd like to address social interaction and mental health when it comes to homelessness. Lacking social interaction can lead to mental illness, but regaining social interaction can help recover from mental illness. Mental illness can be a result of social isolation, which then can lead to an extreme case of frustration. And if you are going through a period of mental illness, it can be even worse if you find yourself homeless. If you are homeless and spending all your time by yourself, you may be heard by others as maybe talking to yourself. You may have some thoughts that you may want to share and wind up speaking to others as if they were there. And when other people hear and see what you say and do, you might be disappointed if they don't speak to you. They may not interact with you because they don't want to get involved, but if they did, they just might help to get the problem solved. But if you do not understand why they don't speak to you, it might make things even worse and then you don't know what to do. When you are homeless and mentally ill and you are all alone, you might wind up living in a little world of your own. It's difficult to talk to others about your mental illness if you yourself are unaware that you're going through mental illness. But if there are those who are willing to speak to you, it might be the only way that may really help you. I'd like to thank the Reno ambassadors for all that they do when they speak to such homeless people and try to help them with what to do. And also for the Sheriff's Department when they do that too. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back when I got even more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, beautiful.
Troy Regus, followed by Paul White.
Good morning Board, my name's Troy Regus for the record, and I'm here to talk about Seven Magic Mountains Whisper. So, in doing this, I went to over fifty businesses and I talked to businesses in our area about the spending of five hundred thousand dollars to move some rocks here. And I didn't get one business who thought it was a good idea. I, they had a lot of good ideas what that money could be used for, it's COVID money. One thing is to build South Village Regional Park. Not soccer stadium, but just build the park, that's what the park was there for. Some people thought maybe we should have some better fire plans in case we have emergency fires. But there were a lot of ideas, not one person thought we should spend five hundred thousand dollars for some rocks. I even had a guy who does construction who told me for a hundred thousand, he would duplicate the whole thing and put fifty thousand in his pocket. And he's a businessman, so I'm sure that was a good idea for him, right? But I've also talked to people who said that the artist has the final say in this, and this might not be something that he wants to do or has signed off on yet, and it might cost another five hundred thousand dollars is what I was told. I'm getting all that information, I haven't got it yet, but when I do, I'm gonna come back to this dais and I'll talk to you about it more, even though you're voting today, but I hope you don't vote for it, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul White, followed by Britton Griffith. Paul White, followed by Britten Griffiths. Paul White. Oh, it's Paul White.
Your refusal to do anything with this homeless out of control issue is really endangering the community. In the last week, we've been on the river from Mayberry to Wingfield, and from Wingfield down to out to Lockwood. Some of the camps are being removed, many are not, that are in violation of federal laws, we sit here. The lady I tried to get a book a tour with, so we finally had to go for ourselves, I guess works for you, Mr. Brown, Bethany something, couldn't lie more or hide more of the truth of what's going on in that tent. The staff are selling drugs. We went in there, there were ten machetes and two pistols inside that place, and fentanyl being sold. You, you can't ask for a tour. Your elected officials, go in there and just see this. Go in there and just sign up for a bed, and they'll walk around a little bit, throwing food on the walls in the restroom, coming and going with the drugs. Safe camp couldn't be more of a, just to go there to rot until you can get a ten-year voucher for an apartment, when you get a couple thousand a month already. We, Sage Street. They're all there because of substance abuse, and they're sitting around the fire pit at night, drinking and using drugs. Guys, why do you refuse to give Education Crusade a fifteen-minute agenda item to tell this? I tried calling every single one of you. And Mr. Brown, you're the employed one, they're elected. You can't get a phone number for you? You can't get a return call?
Please address the full board.
It's, it's everyone. I can't get a return call from you either, for that matter, or any interest. I mean, I, I don't get it. What, what's compassion? How do you convince yourself that with, when the, in the last seven years, we've gone from eighty homeless to eighteen hundred, and on this trajectory, in 2031, it's going to be thirty-six thousand? You've all received videos showing a presentation on this, you've all received an op-ed that talked in detail about it, you all received a recent brief from Education Crusade showing exactly where it's at, and yet every single one of you refuses to go look at it, go in there on your own and see, walk into the tent and see what you see. Grant Denton will be the first person to tell you the programs are a failure. The first person he'll be to tell you, like he's told me many times. Why do you just think this is okay to let it go? These people are just rotting and dying, they don't know, because we keep taking the federal money that requires you to not be able to have any rules in any of your facilities.
Britten Griffiths, followed by Michael Sullivan.
Okay, good morning. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Britten Griffiths. I am here today to ask you to pull Agenda Item thirteen point five, Community Spay and Neuter Programs. For a disclaimer, I am a past Board Member of the Nevada Humane Society and a current Board Member of Options Vet Clinic. It is my gravest concern that nearly one million dollars is going to a single agency that is currently very well-funded in our community and otherwise. Sadly, over the last few years, many of us in the area and in the industry understand and see the consequences of giving one animal agency a monopoly control of community resources, funding, and support. I ask that we just pause, because what you are offering today is wonderful, and it will be a huge life-saving issue for animals in the community. However, if we could work to making a cohesive community program that would divide these tax dollars to multiple agencies that have proven to be successful and animal, animal paros in Washoe County. I believe providing funding to location staff and agencies with proven records and that have stepped up to clear the gaps over the last few years would be wonderful, including exponentially expanding these dollars' impact. It would allow residents to access quality, transparency, and assistance by way of choice. For example, some of these animals could find care at Washoe County Regional Animal Services, so a full-time veterinarian could perform span neuter surgeries, invitation to other nonprofits such as SBA of Northern Nevada's New Voucher Program, which would give private practice vet clinics across Washoe County, Options Vet Care, who could expand reduced cost spay newer services focused on low-income households, seniors and vets seeking to get low-income housing, and homeless pet owners, as well as community cat caregivers, Pet Humane Network, who also spays and neuters services to the community, can expand their capacity. I hope today you will pull this item so we can include and use this incredible opportunity to do the most good for the most people in our county and over just one agency. Let's reward the folks that have been our animal champions, and for the animals that people consider their family in this region for the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Sullivan, followed by James Benton.
Good morning. I'm Michael Sullivan, I live in Washoe County and have been a resident of Nevada for seventy-six years. I'm a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesman. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over twenty states. Today I come to you as a concerned citizen, sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by our highly-qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear, they don't add up. Just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes. If you had ten thousand fewer dollars in your bank account than you had when you deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company had a significant discrepancy in its books, the company would certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all public companies. Our audit of the 2022 election, using only official data provided by state election officials, shows that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We're not saying one candidate won over another, or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from Certified Election shows that votes as counted were not all valid and accurate under the law. Today, we will prevent, present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We're happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about the specific findings. If you have questions that I cannot answer now, I commit to getting you the answer in writing from the United Sovereign, Sovereign Americans Executive Team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation have been shared with state election officials and law enforcement. It's essential that you, as our representatives, make it clear that these issues must be taken seriously. Today, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of your constituents and your country. Thank you. Our next speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speakers will conclude our presentation.
Thank you.
James Benton, followed by Fred Meyer.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is James M. Benton. I'm a volunteer for United Sovereign Americans. Please place my comments in the permanent record. Whereas, a resolution for a legally valid 2024 election. Whereas, it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have fair and free elections, and the right of suffrage can be denied by demace, debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote, just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise. Reynolds versus Sims, three seventy-seven, U.S., five thirty-three, nineteen sixty-four. Whereas, it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law in Re. Coy. one twenty-seven, U.S. three seventy-one, eighteen eighty-eight. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government works only when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act, nineteen ninety-three. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of votes, voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in one hundred twenty-five thousand ballots in error by the voting system. This is found in Help America Vote Act, two thousand two. We, as a group, are volunteers. If you have any questions, please ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Meyer, followed by Victoria Meyer.
Fred Meyer, please put this on the permanent record. Whereas, an open-source audit of the Nevada 2022 general election conducted by Nevada state citizens has uncovered evidence of mass inaccuracies that violate both federal and state law, including two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-six ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Nevada State voter roll database, one hundred and fifty thousand and fifty votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seven more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election, no one knows who cast them, one hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-three apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of the system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Nevada was eight. Certification, as defined by the, by law, an attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voter must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an, is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizen, a fraud adventito, United States versus Throckmorton, ninety-eight, U.S., sixty-one, eighteen seventy-eight. From time immemorial, an election to the public office has been in point of substance no more or no less than the expression of qualified electors of their choice of candidate. United States versus Classic, three-one-three, U.S., two-nine-nine, nineteen forty-one. Whereas, Nevada's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protections of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by the U.S., the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Meyer, followed by Clint Bolt.
Victoria Meyer, fifty-year resident of Washoe County. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 election. That upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenge thirty days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked, secured ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and CVRs. Six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, a NIST-compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a ninety-five percent confidence level of all elections pursuant to the Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensic, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronics systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of all unique variances above is more than ten percent of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand count and full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded.
Thank you.
Clint Bolt, followed by Cliff Nellis.
Hi, Alexis. My name is Clint Bolt, and I'm a resident in Washoe County for thirty-plus years, thirty-eight, thirty-six years, something like that. This is the appendix to the resolution, research source for the open-source audit by the United Sovereign Americans Nevada Chapter, Nevada Statewide Voter Roll, of February tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Relevant laws applicable to a valid election process are U.S. Constitution, Article One, Section Four, H.R. Two, the National Voter Registration Act of nineteen ninety-three, Public Law, one oh-three dash thirty-one, H.R. Thirty-two-nine-five, the Help America Vote Act of two thousand two, Public Law, one oh-seven-two-five-two, Federal Election Assistance Commission Voting Systems Standards, Volume I, Performance Standards, April two thousand two, Federal Information Security Modernization Act of two thousand fourteen, Public Law, one thirteen-two-eighty-three, originally Federal Information Security Management Act of two thousand two, Public Law, one oh-seven-three-four-seven, Title III, National Institute of Standards and Technology, S.P. eight-hundred-five-three, Security and Privacy Controls for Information Systems and Organizations, FIPS, one-nine-nine, Standards for Security Categorization of Federal Information and Information Systems, U.S. Code Title Fifty-two, Subtitle I, Voting Rights, one oh-one oh-one dash one oh-seven oh-two, Subtitle II, Voting Assistance in Elections Administration, two oh-one oh-one, two-one-one-four-five, including Fifty-two, USC, one oh-one oh-one, and B, Intimidation Threats and Coercion, Fifty-two, USC, one oh-three oh-seven, C, False Information and Payments for Registrating Voting, Fifty-two, USC, two oh-seven oh-one, Retention and Preservation of Records and Papers by Officers of Elections, Fifty-two, USC, two oh-seven oh-two, Theft, Destruction, Concealment, Manipulation and Alteration of Records of Papers, Fifty-two, USC, two one oh-eight-one, Voting Systems Standards, HEVA, Fifty-two, USC- C. two oh one oh eight three, Computerized Statewide Voter Registration, Those Requirements and Requirements for Voters Who Registered by Mail, eighteen, U.S. C. two four one, Conspiracy Against Rights, eighteen, U.S. C. two four two, Deprivation of Rights Under Color of Law, eighteen, U.S. C. fifteen nineteen, False Records in the Administration of Federal Matter, eighteen, U.S. C. one oh two eight A, Aggravated Identity Theft, eighteen, U.S. C. five one four, Fictitious Obligations, and according to the law, uh, anything, um, under two percent, uh, I think it was two percent. Uh, the voting machines under these statutes are technically illegal if you read the law. Thank you.
Cliff Neillis followed by Sharon Engel.
Cliff Neillis, I ask my comments to be put in the permanent record. Um, I live in Washoe County, but a resident of the state of Nevada for about sixty-two years, something like that. I am also a volunteer and not an official spokesman with the United Sovereign Americans. You just heard a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our twenty-twenty-two election from registration to certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the twenty-twenty-four general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need certainty. The voting system which controls our most vitally important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies within our election system, a system which is part of the national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing us not to fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, the self-esteem of our children and young people? How much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting each other? The cost is immeasurable. So I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website showcasing our initiatives nationwide has some extremely important videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found here in Nevada, as well as other states. The website is uniteforfreedom.com. That's U.N.I.T.E., the number four, F.R.E.E.D.O.M. dot com. I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our organization. One more time, that's U.N.I.T.E., the number four, F.R.E.E.D.O.M. dot com. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Tracy Dean followed by Joni Hammond.
Wait a minute. I think this angle was next.
I live in Washoe County and have been a resident of Nevada for seventy years. I'm a volunteer and not an official spokesperson for the United Sovereigns Americans. What you've heard today is a culmination of thousands of hours of work by our highly qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams from Nevada and across the country. Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in Nevada, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish this was not the case, but official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. At the same time, government representatives at all levels are not being transparent or responsive to what our citizen audits have found. Our right to choose our representatives in legally valid and transparent elections is the foundation upon which the past two and a half centuries have been secured by sacrifices of our brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters. You on this board today have a chance to show everyone who defended American liberty and the citizens you represent that you value it also by passing this resolution demanding a valid general election in twenty-twenty-four. In the back of your packet, you will see the following resolution that we've asked you all to read and sign on behalf of the residents of Washoe County and the state of Nevada. Be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Washoe County, Nevada, stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the Washoe County Legislature, Nevada Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both state and county boards of elections to cooperate, cooperate, and fulfill these firm requests of the people. And there you will find your names, and we ask you to sign this today. We appreciate your time and your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Tracy Dean up next.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Tracy Dean. I am the Director of Community Cats, which is a twenty-five-year organization, nonprofit, five oh one C three, who focuses on spay and neuter. The idea of having an influx of funds coming in to help this process is really exciting. Community Cats was the first entity that did spay and neuter in the current Washoe County Regional Animals Services Clinic back then, and we're very proud to have done that for for many years. We utilize both the Nevada Humane Society and the options T in our clinics each week to do the work that we do as a volunteer group, and, um, we appreciate both of those services being available in our community. Nevada Humane Society has been very generous with their financial, um, support of Community Cats and offering us clinic, um, opportunities each week, and we appreciate that. We cannot adopt our way out of our current situation with animals. We must do spay and neuter, however that needs to be done, and the biggest bang for our buck, whatever way it needs to be done, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joni Hammond followed by Drew Rebar.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Joni Hammond. First, I want to commend all the first responders in the Davis Fire. They did a great job. This fire reminded us just how short-staffed we are with law enforcement. My understanding is that there was twenty-four-seven law enforcement presence at the surrounding fire area. That took them away from their assigned duties. Reno Sparks and the surrounding county has grown at an exponential rate the last five years. Have you, as a county commission, looked at the staffing levels with patrol, jail, and the infirmary? Are jail is full, the infirmary is full? Have we added jail space or infirmary space? What could you do now to alleviate overcrowding? I appreciate the county commission in Agenda Item fourteen point two today, spending approximately ninety thousand to determine the recommended commissioned and civilian staffing levels needed to create a safe facility for both the staff manning the proposed new two-hundred-and-forty-bed medical facility and the inmate population. I recommend you do the same on the booking and other housing areas of the jail facility. Many county commission meetings I attend, you spend millions and millions of dollars on the care campus, on hiring outside consultants, on various projects, and hiring other county staff. Would it make sense to support more sheriff deputies and encourage Reno and Sparks to do the same? The Fourth Street Tax Force was formed due to local businesses being unhappy with how Reno police were handling this area. This is another work task that takes the county away from their assigned duties. When was the last time the commission looked at overall law enforcement to see if it's adequate for our community size and demographics? Are the staff and inmates safe at the jail with current staffing? Is the infirmary size at the jail adequate and safe for inmates and staff? With the current growth, we're sorely understaffed, which puts us all, law enforcement and citizen, at risks. And just a side note, deploying six sheriff's deputies today for this, is that the best use of their time when we had one person that was standing in front, not threatening anyone? I question that, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Drew Rebar followed by David Walker.
Drew Rebar, please maintain my comments on the record. What an interesting morning. Free speech, constitutional right. Petitioning your government, constitutional right. Accurate elections. The Nevada Supreme Court says y'all screwed up. It's not just a myth. Here's a Supreme Court ruling highlighted for you. You didn't even contest that you messed up, did you? But let me move on to some other issues. Let's, let's talk about the Constitution and what's been going on here with restricting constitutional rights and the freedom to petition our government. Chairman Hill, you like to gavel people down, you like to shut people up, you like to tell people that they can't talk about certain things, you like to say that we can't mention certain names. Our federal courts have determined I can cuss, I can swear, I can do whatever I want. There's time, place, and manner restrictions. It's my three minutes, it's my time. The place is proper. Public comment. My manner, the only thing you can restrict is I don't get to threaten anybody, I don't get to attack anybody that's gonna hurt them, harm them physically. Mary Kanderas, the attorney over there, see, I'm saying names here, isn't this fun? Gavel me down, I dare you. Let's put your name in the lawsuit, I'm gonna keep talking about Mary Kanderas. Let's get, let's talk about Jeff Scott over there, too. Let's name some names and talk about the people here. Mary Kanderas likes to play these games where she says you're attacking me, you're, you're whatever. How, how did you, how did you phrase it there? Just me and my existence with my cameras and attack? Is that, is that what you were saying earlier? I'm just a guy that asks questions about our government, petitioning our government, those that are paid with my tax dollars, and you wanna shut me up? You wanna shut the man that was up here showing statistics? You wanted to hide his statistics from the public. Why are the elected people wanting to hide statistics about elections from the public? Why did you take an hour of everybody's time to make sure that he couldn't speak? How ridiculous. Marcia Burke Diggler, you need to win. You need to get this woman off of this, this committee here so we have freedom of speech again, so we can petition our government, so we've got open government. And that guy Jeff Scott over there, we really gotta fire him. He's just a real pile of whatever. Anyways, y'all have a really nice day. There is no personal attack in any of this. I just want free, open government that's accountable to the public, that serves the public instead of rules the public. Have a nice day.
David Walker followed by Ann Marie Grant.
I'm David Walker, CEO of the Nevada Museum of Art, for the record, and, uh, good morning. Um, I'm going to, uh, talk about Seven Magic Mountains. Seven Magic Mountains by renowned Swiss artist Hugo Rondinone took four years to produce, cost three point five million dollars. It opened outside of Las Vegas in twenty sixteen and instantly became a global sensation. It attracts between one thousand and two thousand visitors a day. They come from the region, they come from the country, and they come from all over the world, and by the way, it's free. Fair to say, it's one of the most popular public art world, artworks in the world. However, we're unable to renew our lease with the BLM, uh, due to expansion plans of the Harry Reid International Airport, and so we need to move the project by the end of twenty twenty-six, and we're exploring options for that. It's certainly become an iconic symbol of arts and culture and tourism here in the state of Nevada. American cultural tourism travelers have an annual economic impact of a hundred and twenty-three billion dollars, and thirty percent of adults state that specific arts and cultural or heritage events influence their choice of destination. I'd like to quickly summarize the economic impact and vast cultural tourism opportunities and media attention that Seven Magic Mountains received as of our last report in twenty twenty, and it's important to note that significant public funding has come from the Nevada Commission on Tourism, Clark County Parks and Recreation, and the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. The publicity value for earned media attention the project received as of twenty twenty was sixty-one point one million. As of twenty twenty, there were two thousand nine hundred and fifty-two online news stories, four hundred and thirteen broadcast stories, and social media posts reached more than forty million people. Stories have appeared around the globe, including in The New York Times, CBS Sunday Morning, The Guardian, CNN, National Geographic, USA Today, The Huffington Post, The Los Angeles Times, Harper's Bazaar, Art News, and more. Seven Magic Mountains is the definition of cultural tourism. The proposed allocation of funds to potentially relocate Seven Magic Mountains from Clark County to Washoe County is not about the Nevada Museum of Art. Rather, it's about harnessing the power of a proven cultural attraction to drive cultural tourism and revenues to Washoe County. As CEO of the Net, of the Nevada Museum of Art, I am here to help you pursue this opportunity if it's something you would like to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ann Marie Grant followed by Tanya Brown.
Ann Marie Grant, for the record, A-N-N-E-M-A-R-I-E-G-R-A-N-T. First of all, it's very disturbing to see elected officials using multiple armed men to stifle a man exercising his First Amendment rights. I trust come election time, the voters will dole out the consequences for this abuse of authority. What I saw here today is no different than what myself and son experienced when protesting at the sheriff's office, surrounded by armed men who keep their hand on their guns the entire time, demanding I move to the so-called First Amendment area. After all, I am a five-foot female armed with a bullhorn, big threat. My brother, Thomas Purdy, was thirty-eight years old when he was tried, convicted, and executed by Reno Police and Washoe County Sheriff's Office during a mental health crisis. His crime was asking for help at the Pepper Mill Casino. Instead of help, Reno PD hogtied my non-combatant mentally ill one hundred thirty-eight-pound brother for over forty minutes and dumped him at the jail to be affixed and pig piled on by multiple deputies on his neck and back. It made me sick to see Sheriff Balaam condemning the murder of George Floyd in twenty twenty, when Washoe County has several George Floyds of their own. This county seems to have perfected sweeping things under the rug. Instead of truth, my family got lies. They told me my brother suddenly stopped breathing and was talking crazy. Well, video doesn't lie like the sheriff's office does, and they left out the part where my brother had been hogtied and pig piled on, begging for his life, telling them he needed an ambulance, telling them they were gonna kill him, telling them he was going to die. My brother literally said to these people, "You guys could have been a lot better people. Why did you do this to me?" Apparently, some community members here aren't aware that the sheriff's office has the biggest budget. Have they taken a look at the salaries that, that these deputies are pulling in to come harass a man exercising his First Amendment rights? They don't need more training, what they need is humanity and empathy. They act with impunity like some of you on this board. Well, it's good to see the community trying to hold you all accountable, because accountability is good for all of us, all of you up on the board included. Sixteen human beings have died under Sheriff Balaam's care and custody since two thousand nineteen. Notice the first word is K. Notice the first word is "care." You have a duty to our most vulnerable community members under NRS 211.020. Having the sheriff's office self-report to you is the fox guarding the hen house. I'll remind you, most at the hellhole called Washoe Detention Facility are awaiting their day in court yet to be convicted of anything. Police investigating themselves is not transparency, and it will never get us to accountability. DA Chris Hicks did not even review any of the three murders at the jail. My brother was one of three men affixed to death within a year period. Instead of discipline, these deputies and officers are promoted and given awards. None of them are randomly drug tested. That's a problem. When you can kill without consequence, you need to take a drug test.
Thank you.
Tanya Brown, followed by Tim McGivney.
Tanya Brown, spelled T-O-N-J-A-B-R-O-W-N, advocates for the inmates and the innocent. I have put up here, this is a motion for discovery filed in 1988. It was our motion for discovery. This was found in the Washoe County District Attorney's file when the Honorable Judge Brent Adams issued an order to Dick Gammick back in 2009 to turn over the entire file in the Nolan Klein case. And I'm here today to speak to you, to speak to the audience here and on TV, that if you have a loved one who has been convicted or who is about to stand trial, to pay close attention to this. Along with this, I have had, my brother spent 21 years in prison for a crime he didn't commit. And again, just prior to his death, the judge ordered this, and this is what was found. The handwritten notes of the prosecuting attorney, Ron Rachel, it says, "No showing of materiality." The next one, again, is still, "No showing of materiality" here, and it's highlighted. And then this is interesting. This is dealing with all material to be turned over to the defense, and he writes, "No." This is a 1988 court order instructing Ron Rachel to turn over all the evidence. He defied a court order. This was discovered in the 2009. Not only was that discovered, they had another, they had a prime suspect that they withheld from the defense. Not only that, there was so much other favorable evidence that contradicted almost every single witness that testified for the state, including the victims. Okay? So, I will make this quick. Try to. The CIC was implemented within the Washoe County District Attorney's Office. It is called the Conviction Integrity Committee. I submitted an application for a review. I was denied a review in 2018. In 2022, a public records request was put in on how many cases with the Conviction Integrity Committee. There was another one, and the only difference between the two cases was, one, he did not claim a Brady violation, no withholding of evidence. He got a thorough review. They went through everything, court pleadings, documents, evidence. In our particular case, we claimed Brady violations, we provided them with all the exculpatory evidence that was withheld, everything, including the fact that I had hired a private investigator who located the prime suspect, and we were denied a review. That goes against the CIC's practice and policy of having exculpatory evidence. They violate their own policy. So, go to Tanya Brown, Facebook, you can see this, Nolan Klein says, you can see the evidence, Reno Cop.
Thank you.
Tim McGivney, followed by Matthew Wilkie. Tim McGivney? Matthew Wilkie?
Good still morning, Chair Hill and members of the commission. I'm here today to express my concern regarding the proliferation of STRs or short-term rentals in the area, and urge you to take action further than what's on the agenda today. While I understand STRs may seem to be a lucrative opportunity for property owners, the negative impacts on the community cannot be overlooked. Firstly, short-term rentals contribute to the housing crisis we are currently experiencing. As more properties are converted into STRs, the availability of long-term rentals diminishes driving up prices for local residents and making it increasingly difficult for families to find affordable housing. This trend not only affects individuals seeking stable living arrangement, but also disrupts neighborhoods, leading to increased transient populations and decreased community cohesion. They also lead to frequent turnover of guests, which can result into frequent noises, lack of parking, accountability. In addition to these social impacts, I would like to bring to your attention the significant issue regarding property taxation. It's come to my attention while addressing this with a friend of mine, while showing her and her husband how to look up their own property on the assessor's website and showing them the low-end cap. Her husband asked me, "Well, what does a rental look like?" I said, "It should say high cap." We decided to look at the neighbors next door, since they are a renter. It come to find out, this owner, which the house is a rental, is listed as also low-cap as a main priority. So I decided, why don't we look up that homeowner? He owns 12 houses here in Washoe County. Every single one of those 12 houses is listed as a primary low-income residence, and he has a mailing address in Davis, California. So I don't know how this person who lives in Davis has 12 houses here, but all are primary residents. So I urge the county assessor to investigate these discrepancies and urge that these properties are appropriately taxed as investment properties, reflecting the true use and impact that they have on our housing supply. Looking at the staff's recommendation for the STRs, it looks like if they are a primary residence, there will be a decrease in fees. So this gentleman could, in turn, list all of these residents as STRs and have a decrease in fees. Kind of ironic. By addressing both these regulations of short-term rentals and assessing out-of-state taxes for these out-of-state owners, we can actually ensure the housing market serves local residents rather than distant investors. While I have time, I'd like to say thank you for that sign language. I thought that was great. My mother, rest her soul, used to be a sign language instructor and taught up at Camp Seinschein up in Tahoe, so speaks to my heart, so I really appreciate that. Also, while I have the time, I'd like to see when the next SEHAB will be on the meeting. We can't keep going six, nine months with having these SEHABs. I do know that three members on the SEHAB, Commissioner Clark, Councilmember Reese, and here, all requested monthly meetings, so I'd like to see that, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jerline Bryant, followed by Natalie Sturry.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Manager Brown. My name is Jerline Bryant. I'm the CEO of the Nevada Humane Society. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding a critical funding request that will strengthen, we believe will strengthen, the entire animal welfare network here in Washoe County. Unfortunately, I think that there is some misinformation and a lack of understanding in our community about these potential funds, and I hope that what I have to say will help clear that up. Earlier this year in February, NHS partnered with Washoe County Regional Animal Services to host a town hall meeting that was attended by 125 community members, including representatives from Trap Neuter Return, commonly known as TNR groups, local rescue organizations, and community animal welfare advocates. The message we heard from everyone in that room was loud and clear. There is a desperate need for access to affordable spay and neuter services in Washoe County. Pet overpopulation is overwhelming our shelters and rescues, and the community is struggling with the high cost of surgeries, which can run upwards of $1,200 for an animal at a private veterinary clinic. NHS is requesting $750,000 to relaunch and expand our high-quality, high-volume spay and neuter program. This program is vital to addressing the ongoing issue of pet overpopulation in our community. Our goal is to perform 5,000 surgeries in the first year and 7,000 surgeries in the second year, bringing us back to pre-pandemic levels of service. This will directly reduce the number of unwanted litters and the strain that unwanted litters place on animal services, local shelters, rescues, and community resources. To be clear, this is for owned animals in our community, not animals that are in our shelter that are homeless and are looking for homes. But what makes this initiative so impactful is how it extends beyond just the Nevada Humane Society. Our goal is to have a collaborative effort, working hand-in-hand with smaller rescues, TNR groups, and Washoe County Regional Animal Services, to ensure that affordable spay and neuter services are available to everyone. A significant component of our program will be to implement a voucher system that will allow smaller rescues and TNR partners to receive free spay and neuter services for the animals they care for. Ultimately, this funding is not just a temporary fix. It's a long-term investment in the health and well-being of Washoe County's animal population. It's a chance to create sustainable solutions to overpopulation, to empower smaller rescues, and to ensure that every pet owner, no matter their financial situation, can access essential spay and neuter services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie Sturry, followed by Marcia Burke Bigler.
Thank you for the invitation to attend today, and thank you for the opportunity to apply for the ARPA grant. My name's Natalie Sturry. I'm with Nation's Finest, the site director here locally. I wanted to share briefly with you some of the highlights of what this award would allow our agency to do in the continued support of veterans. As a side note, we have been the lucky recipients of an ongoing county award for the last eight to 10 years between the two programs that it touches on, and we thank you for that. At Nation's Finest in Reno, we focus on housing, behavioral health, and veteran benefits, which are all key to developing sustainability. Our services are unique because a veteran can come to us and receive all three components under one roof. While our primary grant, Supportive Services for Veteran Families, focuses on the housing piece, we have relied upon the generosity, again, of Washoe County to support our Behavioral Health Program and Veteran Service Officer Program, without which we could not deliver these services. Our focus today is on these two programs and how they operate together to support the long-term sustainability of our veterans. At the heart of our Behavioral Health Center is our clinical coordinator, whose task is to manage the care planning and treatment of our clients during their stay at our transitional living facility. 100% of these veterans participate in group and individual counseling sessions focusing on the treatment of mental health. Recovery groups are also provided for our veterans with substance use disorders. Given the often complex presentation, the treatment of co-occurring disorders necessitates a highly skilled clinician. Currently, that position is held by a doctorate-level marriage and family therapist. Under his guidance, the veterans also participate in financial planning discussions, housing searches, and case management sessions, focusing on the veteran's treatment goals. All these factors are essential in terms of forming stability and sustainability in housing. There's another piece, though, and that is where our two programs, our VSO program and our Behavioral Health Program, intersect to deliver a complete care package, so to speak, and the recipe for long-term sustainability. That key piece is income, which for many of our veterans comes in the form of VA benefits such as service or non-service connected pensions. To this end, our Veteran Service Officer Program has served over 1,300 people annually with at least soft-touch assessments, and over 818 of those individuals received benefits in the amount of $2,283,971.
Thank you.
Marcia Burke Bigler, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Marcia Burke Bigler, and I am here today to talk about 14-4, Seven Magic Mountains, which probably is a really great thing. I actually saw the picture of it, it's really beautiful. But I don't understand why this county would spend $500,000 for rocks when right across the parking lot, we have seniors who are not being fed properly. I went to the senior breakfast. It was sad. I'm a senior, I couldn't have eaten it. I don't like biscuits and gravy. And when there were no eggs and no milk and no liquid cream to put in their coffee, and all they got was powdered cream to go into their coffee, which is not hot, by the way, that's disgusting. Look, many of you have been to my house, and those of you haven are certainly welcome to come and see all the art I have on my walls. I'm very into art. I really like the museum, I spend a fair chunk of time there. And it is an important thing, and I don't deny that this is a beautiful piece of art that probably could create some tourism for us. But no amount of tourism, no amount of positive press, no amount of anything that relates to art is more important than our seniors and taking care of our seniors who need to be fed. And that's just one thing that could be done with this $500,000. There are a lot of other things. I think someone earlier mentioned additional police, additional help in the jail. There are lots of things you could do with $500,000, and although art is extremely important, it isn't more important than citizens. And that is one of the things that really concerns me. I'm fascinated by how this ends up in a selection of all these really great projects, and there are some really super projects in this. I'm fascinated on how it ends up with that. I guess it's a new style of managing the way you do your agendas, and there's nothing wrong with that. But just, please, think twice before you spend $500,000 that could be spent on feeding seniors and feeding veterans and feeding those who are locked into their homes and can't get out. Think about that before you spend it on rocks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Trista Gomez.
Penny Brock, for the record. As each day passes in this election season, the American people are overwhelmed by what we see. From the attempted assassination of President Trump again on Sunday, does that man have nine lives? I guess we'll find out. To what we saw this morning in chambers over someone wanting to show election data, and we, the people, having to sit here for what, half hour, an hour? That wasn't right. This is the chamber that belongs to we, the people. Our commissioners were elected by we, the people, to conduct the business of we, the people. The elections are just part of it. But if we don't have fair, honest elections, this constitution will cease to exist. The People's Chambers here will cease to exist. We are asking for a fair and honest election. We can still do paper ballots and hand count, nothing is impossible. This is National Only Citizens Vote Week. We, the people, would like to ask you how you, as the county commission, plan to ensure that no non-citizens will vote in Washoe County. In the Constitution, Bill of Rights Number 14 says that only citizens, that's American citizens, are to vote. In our Nevada Constitution, it also says that only citizens are to vote. And yet, we know that non-citizens are voting in our Washoe County elections. I have a story that goes back to the late '90s, in fact, I won't take the time to tell Federal law prohibits non-citizens, resident aliens as well as illegal immigrants, from voting in our federal elections. Most state constitutions note that voting is for the U.S. and state citizens. But many do not expressly ban non-citizen voting or include the words "vote." But many do not expressly ban non-citizen voting or include the words "citizens only." It shouldn't have to be, because both constitutions expressly state that already. We have a problem. We already know that with February, we had glitches; June, we had hiccups; and now this new voter registration system is bumps.
Thank you.
Trista Gomez, followed by Erin Sims.
Hello, I'm Trista Gomez. Please record my comments verbatim. I'm here again, and I don't know whether to talk about... Well, I do know what I'm going to talk about, but I could talk about prevention versus the amount of money that we're putting toward homeless and substance abuse services. We could talk about the obvious feeling of disenfranchisement from so many people, so many voters. We could talk about the impacts of development on residents. We could talk about so many things. But today, I'm going to talk about, again, what I talked about the other week, which is just the relationship, which I feel like is a really foundational piece of what's going on with this county. I was born here forty-seven years ago. My grandparents were born here. My mom was born here. My kids were born here, all four of them. I really loved it when everybody thought of Reno as like Reno 911, and nobody actually like really wanted to come, and we were like, "That's okay. That's okay." Because now we're seeing what this uncontrolled development and growth and these new policies are doing to our community, and it's unfortunate. But today, I want to talk about that I've owned a business. We've owned a business in Mike Clark's district for about nineteen years, and we know a lot of the people who, you know, live in that district. We probably see more people in that district than we see even in our own home. And I am concerned, and I have been concerned, about the way that the agenda items have been handled and the way that it seems that that district has very little voice and very little advocacy based on the structure of the way that the chairs, you know, can handle the agendas. And a couple weeks ago, what we saw was that there was an admonition to Mr. Clark about the way that he was handling, you know, his dissatisfaction and his frustration with advocacy of the people in his district. And what I feel like as a resident, I would say is I feel like I don't really know what recourse he has. I don't know where his options come from. Mean words should not negate the option for him to advocate for his residents in his district. And that sort of undercuts, or that sort of is the foundation... I mean, I'm listening to the just extreme dissatisfaction of citizens and citizens and citizens and residents. This used to not be the case here. I used to think good old boy's system was bad. This system is not working for citizens. Please do something different. Have a different chair.
Thank you.
Erin Sims.
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Erin Sims, for the record. Hopefully, my comment's a little sweeter and shorter. I just wanted to come here today to say thank you on behalf of my family, who were victims of the Davis Creek Fire, not just to this commission, but to our brave firefighters who have been working around the clock to, you know, serve our community and to help those who have been affected. I also wanted to say a special thank you to our community. It's amazing to me how much the northern Nevada community really comes together in times of tragedy, and so we saw that directly. You know, we've had nonstop, you know, different support groups, organizations reaching out to us, offering us help and giving us resources. So it's just been wonderful. We had three young kids who were affected by the loss of our house. They lost everything, so, you know, we're having to get whole new clothes and new school supplies and, you know, just things to help them feel safe again. So I just really wanted to come down here today to say thank you to everybody and to have it at least be somewhat public that our family continues to be so grateful for all of our wonderful community members. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. I'm so sorry for your loss.
No one else has signed in, but I did receive an email to place on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move into item five. Manager Brown.
Commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you. Manager Brown, do you have anything for us?
Madam Chair, one item which has been mentioned, announced today, is National Voter Registration Day. So if you are not registered, vote here, and you're a resident of Washoe County, we urge you to do so early in the process. Don't wait till the last minute. You can do that at a variety of sites, vote.org or going to the county website. Madam Chair, also want to provide a brief update that the transition to the new voter registration system, the top-down system being rolled out by the Secretary of State's Office, has been... is off to a good start in terms of its implementation. We're currently in the process of auditing election reports, processes, as well as the voter lists. So for all those who have implored us to clean up the voter rolls, this is an opportunity for us to look at all the data files and make sure that they are as they should be, and that is underway. We're now focused on getting familiar with the new voting... the new system, so that when we begin to bring on the vote center workers and expand the workforce, we can train them properly how to use it. You should know that the ballots have been proofed and are at the printer. Candidates were able to proof their own entries on each ballot. Sample ballots are scheduled to be sent during the first week of October, October 7th at this point. And I do want to note that because of the number of ballot measures, the seven questions that are on this ballot, the sample ballots will contain the pro and con arguments for all of those items, which will balloon the size of that to eighty to a hundred pages. So people need to be prepared for that. Our vendors, our equipment vendors, so the first was talking about the software. The equipment vendors for the new sorter and some of the other things that will help us process, assess the ballots more quickly will be here through September 30th for training our staff on the new equipment. We are planning an open house in the registrar's office the following week. It's probably going to be on October 10th. So for those of you who've been asking for access to the registrar's office to register our voters, this is an opportunity for the public, as well as the media, to visit the registrar's office and find out more about the new system. And we plan to have the registrar of voters here at our next BCC meeting. That concludes my report. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Manager Brown. And we have our staff from Emergency Management here to give a recognition of another county department. So before we go into the rest of the Commissioner's comments, which will go on after this, and as the Davis fire is nearing full containment, I think our emergency manager would like to say a big thanks. So welcome, Ms. Ettravaria.
Thank you, Chair. We actually asked for this prior to the Davis fire.
Oh, there you go.
But what an excellent opportunity to thank all of our community partners that have collaborated and worked with us to provide response for our community and support one another. We really wanted to recognize the libraries as a fantastic partner with Emergency Management. We're always trying to improve our processes and procedures, and we looked at, you know, what would be a fast or efficient and effective location to send people for information? Because most of our incidents, as you heard me say last week, are fast-moving, so people just typically need a place to wait out an incident, find information, and feel comfort. And so what automatically came to mind was libraries. It's always been a place of comfort and information for me, and I think for most of our community. So I reached out to Jeff Scott from Libraries, and he said, "Absolutely. Nothing else needed." So it's worked phenomenally well. We have had four separate incidents where we've had to reach out to libraries to set up as an evacuation center. And the hospitality of the staff at each of the libraries has just been over the top. Welcome signs, whatever we need, just really taking that, providing comfort to heart. And it's been felt by our community and by the responders from our Emergency Shelter Council that stand up the evacuation center. So we wanted to thank them. Jeff, are you here? Oh, there you are. So we did get this award, which I think I can put here or somewhere. It says, "In gratitude to County... Washoe County Libraries for Disaster Support in 2024."
Thank you.
There you go. And then we also found a very cool librarian superhero, which we wanted to provide, because you have been heroes to us. It's so much easier to set up, and it's fast, and we're able to let the public know where to go faster, and that means a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Scott?
I just want to thank Kelly for those warm words, and this is our staff here that make it happen. So it's always Kelly comes and want to get the equipment in South Valley's libraries to stand up an EOC. We're like, "Yes, we can do it." I turn to Julie, "Can we do it?" And we figure it out. So the yes is always the easy part on my part, and then we do the work on the back end to make that yes very easy. And all of our staff have been willing to step up when they need to. Jessica here was there for the Northwest Reno, we stood up for evacuation center for the Gold Ranch fire. So it was on a Sunday. We're already closing up. She ran back down there making sure that everything, they had everything they needed and get everything set up. So evacuation center at Spanish Springs, Palomino Fire, Gold Ranch Fire, and then, of course, we were the EOC Operations for Incident Command at South Valley's library. So Julie was instrumental in really making that happen, making sure they had everything they needed. So it's nice when you plan for an emergency, when it happens, everything works out the way it's supposed to, and that's just the great work of Kelly and then our staff making that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, team. Congratulations. We appreciate your work. We all work together at Washoe County, so I appreciate that, Ms. Ettravaria. Okay, we will now go down the line. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? I apologize. Do you want me to come back to you?
You can, if you want, but I'm ready.
You're ready. Okay.
I saw this written somewhere, and I cut it out and saved it. And it says, "Only when our elected officials take action to protect the rights of their constituency will our elections again be free and fair." And I've had a dream that I, you know, wanted to do that. But sometimes I get reminded about something an employee told me when I first became a commissioner, and that was that this room is a place where dreams come to die. And I've tried to prove it's not right, but it happens every once in a while. So I saw this resolution and heard it spoken, and I will sign it and return it, but I think that we should bring this to our board in an agenda where we could actually vote on whether we believe in the Constitution or not, basically, and that we believe in a reelection. And this might bring the public back to where it should be, which we all should be working together to make a better county. So that's all I have to say today.
Thank you. And Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to personally thank and give a shout out to all of our firefighters, law enforcement, military, National Guard specifically, and to the families who lost their homes. Mr. Sims, thank you for your kind words, and we feel deeply for everybody's loss in the community during this crisis. But also wanted to extend the thanks to the families who had the firefighters go out and work the lines, the law enforcement who had to leave the homes, and the military personnel that came from all over the United States, the families that stay at home, sacrifice a lot, so that public safety can be first and foremost. So I was hoping that we could just, if you would join me, in giving everybody a round of applause and gratitude from Washoe County.
Absolutely.
Sunday marked a very historic day in Sun Valley, and I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge it. We recently opened a newly renovated Sun Valley Church, and it's now going to be... have a new name, Our Lady of Guadalupe, Nuestra Señora de Guadalupe. Sunday was one of those moments that I just looked around and was just in awe of how important it is to have community spaces regardless of your denomination, of your ethnicity, of your political background. These gathering spaces in our neighborhoods, in our communities, provide so much glue and so much hope and an opportunity for people to gather and be connected. And that's what happened on Sunday. We saw the most significant church expansion in Washoe County, where the original walls of the building were ten percent and have now grown ninety percent, increasing the capacity from two hundred parishioners to eight hundred. And what ended up happening on Sunday was the walls were full inside the building, and the parking lot was completely full. We had about 2,500 people that came out to celebrate the opening of this first mass, and it was so significant for the community. Five-point-five million dollar gift predominantly from Tom Dolan, very generous, philanthropic, amazing soul in our community that we lost. He died just days before this grand opening celebration, and they had a place for him to sit front and center. And I know he was there in spirit, but I just wanted to extend my condolences to the entire Dolan family and to all of the donors who stepped up, whether they were large gifts or small gifts, that made this church expansion possible. And it was just a beautiful example of what happens again when we come together as a community. So thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Andrea.
Well, you definitely moved me, Commissioner Garcia, because I don't think people really understand the philanthropic generosity of Tom Dolan, not only for this church, but in many other places. And most people didn't even know about the church, to be honest. And so thank you for sharing that. I just wanted to do a huge shout out to the staff at Washoe County who put on the first inaugural awareness campaign on Saturday at Sparks Marina. Again, Ryan Guffsterson and Laura Caprioli and just the whole team of people. For a first event, it was amazing. It was really amazing. I think that, again, to understand the huge need of foster parents in our community can't be, you know, echoed enough in terms of the urgency. And so bringing the awareness and having the community come out, having hearing testimony from kids and foster parents that are also encouraging others to think about giving, again, the greatest gift, and that's love and a home. So I just want to do a huge shout out to everyone who made a really, really memorable opportunity for us to continue to look at how we can expand that opportunity for parents, adults, to think about bringing in a foster child and hopefully even adopt. So FAM stands for Foster, Adopt, and Mentor. So there are opportunities, and I'd encourage everyone to look at going to the Human Services Agency to see what you might be able to do. Thank you, Manager.
Thank you. And Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got several things I'd like to discuss this morning. One of them is that FAM event there at Sparks Marina. I attended that late in the afternoon, and it was very nicely done. Very proud of the work Washoe County did to set that up. Also very proud of the firefighters, the way that the fire was handled. Couldn't be prouder of our first responders on all levels. I don't know where to start on the rest of this stuff. I don't know where to start on the rest of this stuff. I wanted to start with, with Matthew Wilk. He mentioned about the Assessor and, and people that are on high cap and low cap and good detective work on his part. But, you know, this, I want to shift quickly to his other comments about the CHAB meeting. You know, the CHAB meeting was canceled a week ago. And it looks like it was canceled because of a press conference and then it looked like it was canceled because somebody came in who was running for office on a national level. You know, I, I wish these folks, maybe somebody from the staff could coordinate with the White House and national candidates and let them know when we're having our meetings and maybe reschedule their appearances in our county. I know the Murdoch trial is going on this morning and I'm, I'm hoping they don't call me over there to interact with them for a photo opportunity so I can conduct my business here. So canceling county business when we have a quorum is outrageous. Quit taking this opportunity for photo ops and canceling community meetings that we need to have and, and then not allowing people to speak at these three-minute comments. So I need to echo what Mr. Wilk said and, and start having our CHAB meetings on a regular basis and figure out how we can get things done. I understand there was a, a death at the CARES campus last night or this morning. I hope we'll have some information about that. I hope that isn't some, some other incidents that was going to be swept under the rug. But we need to make better decisions on how we handle that. Mr. White brought up several items today. You know, he talks about a tour of the CARES campus. I'm a sitting commissioner. I was denied for months and months and months a tour of the CARES campus. And I was told it was because of, it was a construction site. Well, if you think about that, if that, if that's a logical reason not to go, then, then why would you allow five or six or 700 people to be sleeping there and be walking around and be in and out there and eating and using the restroom and taking a shower? If it's a construction site and I can't go walk through it, why are people allowed to live there? So again, sounds to me like, and I'll use this word, a lame excuse. Paul White brought up some things and, and if it's true, we should investigate it. Machetes there, other weapons there, you know, this is a county facility. It's patrolled by the sheriff and, and I think, and I know it's a no barrier facility, which means, I guess no barrier means do whatever you want to do. Wish we had a no barrier, some other no barrier places around this county, but we don't. But I would suggest that we let the, let the residents know on a regular basis that the sheriff might walk through with some metal detectors around the grounds, because I understand there's weapons buried around in the grounds. We might also have from time to time drug sniffing canines walking through there and just give people the heads up, this could happen. We're not there to harass you, but just giving you a heads up that you might be in violation of some laws if, if you're holding drugs or holding weapons in this facility. And so maybe those weapons were there, maybe they weren't. If he said they were, we should, we should at least look into it. So I'm, I'm suggesting that we put that on the agenda to have the, ask the sheriff to patrol that area from time to time and just drop in. Metal detectors, CHAB meetings, Nicholas St. John this morning. I think this commission just took the bait. I think he got played. Here's somebody who wants attention. Here's somebody who's insisting on detention, on, on attention. And what did you do? You gave him attention. This is the tail wagging the dog. I don't agree with what this guy's up to, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue with him. If he wants to stand, if, if it's, if it's legal to stand in the back of the building, it's probably legal to stand in the front of the building. As long as he wasn't hollering, making wild hand gestures, I would have let him stand there until he got tired of standing there. I can sit longer than he can stand. I promise you that. So again, taking the bait, holding everybody in here hostage, keeping us all for, for an hour. You count the number of people and then add, and add it up. And how many man hours got wasted, woman hours got wasted here this morning? How many police or sheriff's deputies showed up? You know, what did this all take? Just because somebody wanted to stand there? Well, I guess we made our point, didn't we? You know, it was, it was, it was a fight that wasn't even worth winning. It was an argument that wasn't even worth winning. If somebody, it was like a, it was like a little toddler wants to throw a tantrum. Well, let him throw a tantrum. He'll get tired of it after a while. Could have done that. But no, we've got to, we've got to stop all the proceedings, make a big deal and show somebody who's the boss. Outrageous. Took the bait, gave it to you the bait and you took it and you ran with it and you wasted all of your time. Now I get to waste some more of your time with it. So those are my thoughts about that. Again, if somebody wants to stand and they're not really doing anything, it just shows you how irritated you are with them. And I know what it's like. I'm on the receiving end of that a lot of times. People are irritated with me and get gavelled down and, and talked to and scolded and whatever, you know. The point is, if there isn't some mischief happening that I have to talk about, don't take it away from me. Don't let me have anything to talk about. Take away the mischief. That's the problem around here. Somebody wants to point something out and you don't want to hear it. Well, the job of being elected is hearing stuff you don't like to hear and learning how to deal with it. Sometimes just ignoring it's probably the best bet. I want to bring up something that Trista Gomez talked about, about District Two. You know, I'm elected by one-fifth of the county and yet I can't get anything on the agenda. We can't get anything done in my district. Jeanie Herman suffered the same fate in her district for a number of years. And let's take Jeanie and myself out of the equation. Let's get, get rid of us. That means one-fifth of the county doesn't have representation because somebody on this dais doesn't like me personally. So if you don't like me personally, don't allow anything that'll help District Two, you know. I didn't get to go see, the majority of the fire last week was in District Two. The chair goes and, and makes a presentation there. I wasn't invited to that. I didn't get to go. I didn't even know about it. I heard about it on the news. That was my district. I'm trying to represent my people and you don't let me do that. You're taking my voice away. You might get away with it with Nicholas St. John, but you're not going to get away with it, me. I'm going to start holding town hall meetings in District Two. And I'm looking for some locations and I'm going to invite the people from District Two to come in and talk about whatever they want to talk about for three minutes. And bring it up and we'll film it and we'll put it online. It'll be on YouTube. We'll let the county deal with that. I've asked for town hall meetings in this room and I'm not allowed to do it apparently. I've asked for town hall meetings in other part, other county citizen-owned buildings throughout the county in District Two. And the county doesn't want me to do it. The DA said I shouldn't do it. You know, I'm going to do it. I want to hear what the people have to say and I want to bring that message of the people, my people, District Two, back to this dais and share it with my, their concerns. See, I take myself out of this equation. What Mike Clark thinks doesn't matter. It matters what the people in my district think. And when I bring in things that people in my district think and they're ignored, then there's only one way to fix that. There's an election coming up and I hope you step forward and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Item Six, Manager Brown.
I'm sorry, Madam DA.
Yes.
Thank you. I needed to make a record of the incident earlier this morning for purposes of the recording by the clerk's office. As you know, the, the case law is very clear that a governing body has an interest in conducting the people's business in an orderly manner from disruption. And the First Amendment is not absolute. In a public meeting, this is well-recognized federal law. Mr. St. John today was not asked to remove, to leave the meeting because of the content of his speech, but rather, and I would ask the chair to affirm this, because he was stating that his exhibit had to be viewed a certain way. And then he was standing when, right in the front, which incidentally blocks the view of others and it blocks my view. So he was disrupting the meeting. He was repeatedly asked to stop doing it and he argued. Therefore, as I stated, the content's not the issue. It brings me no pleasure to point this out, but we've had issues with this person before. And we have, the government has an interest in conducting a public meeting. If people want to protest, they could go outside to do it. They can definitely criticize it here, but that's the issue. And so I wanted to make that clear for the record in the event that there is a complaint. And I would like you to affirm that you also found the conduct to be disrupting and in violation of NRS 203.119.
DA Kanderas, your statements are true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm signed in again as.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my comment, again, for, for a lot of folks who watch this online, probably maybe that was cut out or it was, the filming was stopped. So they might not understand what took place here. This person, for whatever reason, I don't care what he was showing, when, and he didn't like the way it was being filmed or the angle. Okay, that's fair enough. That's his opinion. But when he was done with that, then he just came up and stood by the rail. So maybe it did block Ms. Kanderas's view. But at the end of the day, standing is not protesting in my world, especially when you're allowed to stand in other parts of this building. Lastly, and I really want to thank the sheriff deputies. I think these people were doing a great job with, with, with the situation. You know, they don't like to referee these little, little dust-ups like this. I think that, you know, having seven or eight of the sheriff's deputies in here, I think they were all very professional. I think they handled it well. I salute them. They did everything they could do to de-escalate this and they did a fantastic job. So hats off to the sheriff's department. I think they handled this very, very well. But again, this guy's been doing this meeting after meeting. I don't support him. I don't support his, some of his wacky thoughts, but he's been baiting us and, and you took the bait. Let these people throw their tantrums and ignore them. And that's the best way to get through this. You don't have to engage in, in this kind of stuff. And, you know, he would have left sooner or later. Had he been jumping up and down and cursing and threatening, I'm, I'm all for throwing him right out of here and get the sheriff. But at the end of the day, he was just doing that, just standing there. So that's my thoughts. It should have, could have just de-escalated and saved a lot of time if we just let some of these people have their silent tantrums. Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move into Item Six, Manager Brown.
Item Six is a ratification of September 7th, 2024, Washoe County Declaration of Emergency Concerning Davis Fire in accordance with County Code 65 dot 320.
And Manager Brown, do you want to just give us a bit, a background on this?
So as everybody's aware, on Saturday, September 7th, we activated the Crisis Action Team. That process is initiated by Emergency Manager Kelly Etcheverria, who was just here, notified my office that because of the reports from our first responders, it was appropriate to activate the Crisis Action Team at Level Two. Level Two means basically that the leaders of the emergency response agencies come together in our regional emergency operations center up on Spectrum Drive. We assess the situation. We get updates from the front lines, in this case of the fire, to make our decisions about what are the appropriate next steps. That afternoon, Chief Moore requested of the emergency manager and the county manager that we file for a declaration of emergency, which I approved. Shortly thereafter, the state, the governor also declared a state of emergency. We anticipate that as we're in the final days of closing out the fire incident in terms of hotspots in the, in the original evacuation areas, we're expecting that in the next couple of days, we will probably shut down the state of emergency. But we want to make sure that the mop-up of the incident is complete.
Thank you. And we're just confirming the declaration of emergency of the board. Okay. Thank you very much. Looking to the board to see if there's any additional questions on this matter. I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
There is none.
Okay. I am looking for a motion from the board.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Thank you very much. That motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to Item Seven, Manager Brown.
Item Seven is to proclaim September 17th, 2024 as Constitution Day.
Thank you very much. And I think Commissioner Andriola is going to give the proclamation.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'd also like to, before I start, recognize Christine Hall. I don't think she's here, with the Nevada Students for Engagement who, they were hoping to have students here, but they're studying, I suppose. So on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, proclamation, I'd like to go ahead and proceed. Whereas on September 17th, we commemorate the adoption of the Constitution of the United States, which was signed on September 17th, 1887, and serves as the supreme law of the land. And whereas, the Constitution represents the fundamental principles and ideals upon which our nation is built, including the values of democracy, justice, and liberty. And it embodies the collective will and aspirations of the people. And whereas, the Constitution established a framework for governance, governance that has guided our nation through periods of change and challenge, ensuring the protection of individual rights and the promotion of the common good. And whereas, it is essential to recognize and honor the enduring significance of the Constitution and to reaffirm our commitment to its principles and the responsibilities it imposes on each citizen and institution. And whereas, Constitution Day provides an opportunity to reflect on the achievements and ongoing relevance of our constitutional framework and to promote civic education and engagement among our citizens. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 17th, 2024 as Constitution Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Great. We now will move into Item Eight, Manager Brown.
Item Eight is a presentation by Gabrielle Enfield, Community Reinvestment Manager, regarding a status update for the Community Reinvestment and State.
I just realized, I'm so sorry. We need to vote on that proclamation. My apologies. Commissioner Andriola, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for pointing that out to me. And I'm looking for a second on that.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Okay, seeing none. With a motion and a second, any questions from, from the board on that? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes four to zero. We'll now move into Item Eight. I apologize, Manager Brown.
Okay. Item Eight is a presentation by Gabrielle Enfield, Community Reinvestment Manager, regarding a status update for the Community Reinvestment and State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, grant of $91,587,038 awarded to Washoe County pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, excuse me, or ARPA.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Gabrielle Enfield. For the record, thank you for the opportunity to give you this update. So just a little overview, I'm going to touch on the ARPA SLIFRAF program, as well as our opioid recovery fund, community development block grant, our sponsored projects, as well as federal appropriations. So the first item is our annual plan. So each year in July, we submit a comprehensive annual plan to Treasury on all of the activities that have occurred to date, as well as any expected or possible plans for the remaining funds in the following year. So this is our website. You can see all of our quarterly reports are posted every quarter. And those are posted and submitted to Treasury the last day of the month following the quarter. And if you go down, you'll see our annual plan, the top one. The top one is the 2004 plan that was just submitted the end of this July. And then our previous plans are available there in the small on the bottom. These plans will provide a summary of each project and also identify performance outcomes. So they're available online, and you should have received a hard copy, too. So I just wanted to point that out. We can go back to the slides. So I just wanted to note some of the expenditure categories you'll see in the plan are a little bit different from the ones that, they're really all of Treasury's reporting categories. So some of these categories, Washoe County does not utilize, like premium pay and broadband. We're utilizing other federal funds for those. So we're really focused primarily on negative economic impacts and the public sector capacity with the next, in public health. We, as you know, we spent a lot of the CARES funds on public health, so we focus these dollars in a little bit of other aspects. Here's just a chart showing kind of the perspective as far as how much is going into those different categories as identified by Treasury. This next bit is on really where we are now and moving forward with the state and local fiscal recovery funds. As you know, we received over $90 million in funds. We started implementing those in 2021, and this is just the most recent. The timeline of everything is super long and super tiny. For the winter and spring of '24, we've been allocating new projects and obligating existing projects. Throughout this summer, focusing on final allocations and de-obligations, because some of our projects come in under budget, which is great, and then we de-obligate. We have an obligation deadline that I remind you every time. Just so everyone knows, it's December 31st of 2024. This is coming up really fast. So after that deadline, and we're working very much towards that to ensure that all of our projects are appropriately obligated to meet Treasury requirements. And then between December and throughout the rest of the performance period, we'll be monitoring and reporting on all of those projects through the expenditure deadline, which is December of 26th. A little summary chart of really where Washoe County's funds have gone, really more of like the implementation component. So we have spent 15% of the grants in community grants, and the 80% in internal Washoe County projects, either implemented through Washoe County or focused on Washoe County departments. You'll see the administrative is 4%. That's how much we have budgeted. It may be less in the final analysis, because we are not expending those at the rate to meet that 4%. We have 126. This is given that if all of the items on today's agenda are approved, there would be 126 projects, 64 internal, 59 community projects, and then those three administrative accounts. We have already 45 completed, and just under half a million right now that are allocated. So you see we have a de-obligation on today's agenda. We expect as we close out some more of those projects, we'll have some more de-obligation coming back. So that amount will raise up a little bit. The recommended awards, this last batch, we really went through a process where we identified urgent and emergent need and focused on maximizing the investment. The awards that you'll see that are on today's agenda are internal departments, community nonprofits, as well as other governmental entities. Also, we have a number of community competitive grantees that were awarded during our open competitive process that are receiving amendments to add additional funding to those programs, and then some new awards addressing urgent needs or to maximize investment. This process included, once those were identified, working with county leadership, reviewing the potential projects, also meeting with each of you, four of the five, to review the projects, take input, make adjustments, work with recipients, really understanding what is the scope of work that needs to be in those projects. And then the recommendations that you see as these awards. And then throughout the remainder of the process, we will initiate award documents, training, technical assistance, monitoring, compliance, and all the wonderful things you do with all our federal funds to make sure. The next couple of slides are just really a summary of the projects that are in the two board items. This is the ones that are new this meeting, and they are item number 13. And then these items are to number 12 in September 17th, including the Seven Magic Mountains, which was the project that was identified for the reconsideration. I'm going to go pretty quickly through opioid, because you just heard it all, your last meeting. Opioid funds were awarded at our last meeting, as you know, $31 million over the next 19 years. We awarded $4 million on the 10th. Washoe County Commissioners awarded those projects, and we're getting started with the award documents for those. You can see our next funding cycle would be starting in 2026 in October. Community Development Block Grant is another program under Community Reinvestment. We have two projects that have been awarded. One has already come through the Board of County Commissioners as a sub-grant to Gerlach for a preliminary engineering report for their wastewater. That project and work with, working with Community Reinvestment, they were also able to get a grant from the state for that project. And then the side hill pedestrian improvements that we're really excited to have at, near the schools. And then right now, we are currently in the middle of the process for CDBG with a deadline, application deadline of October 18th. And these are for projects that would be awarded next July. This is just bullet points of some of the projects that were, have received interest from community members or other entities that would like to submit an application to Washoe County or through Washoe County to the state, which is how our process works. We also have sponsored projects. Connie Lucido is our county grants administrator and has been very busy working with departments and community organizations. So the work that we do related to that is identifying, submitting grant applications, planning for future requests to meet priority needs. We are also doing planning and training opportunities as well as oversight and technical assistance to support compliance. I do want to highlight that we are planning a Silver State Grants Conference for February 13th and 14th of 2025. Save the date, we'll go out. This is a sec, we, you may remember, we did a Silver State Grants Conference in 2019, which was sold out, over 300 people, it sold out, and we're doing that again for the region. So applications that were awarded fiscal year '24, here's a summary, but total awards, 37, over 37.5 million. Total applications pending to date is 16.4 million. And here's a summary of some of those projects. So some of them are internal Washoe County projects, collaborations with the community, the university, numerous school district, numerous other entities. Federal appropriations. So as you know, we submitted appropriations the past three years totaling almost $20 million. Most of those projects are either well underway or beginning, depending on where they are in the award cycle. We did submit three projects, and there was a fourth project submitted by TRPA for this federal fiscal year '25. We did not get any of those projects awarded through the committees. So this is the first time we've ever had that happen. But we are going back to the drawing board, and we're going to be submitting more for the coming year. This timeline is the submission timeline. So right now, we're in the process of gathering information and talking to departments and other potential partners about applications for the next round. We'll be preparing for the application in December and January. And as you know, February is generally when the NACO conferences and gives us an opportunity, Commissioners, to take some of those ideas and project information to visit with our congressional representatives. And then in March, we support the submission and submit those applications to our congressional representatives. This next slide is really just to round it out. This is what happens after we've submitted it. They go into the congressional offices. The offices submit them, and then it goes to Congress and goes through that committee process. And then with the passing of the budget, whenever that happens, then they are awarded, or they are in the budget, and then we work with the agency for the awards.
Well, thank you very much. I have a question, but I'll see if the Commissioners do as well. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? Okay, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question. When the re-submital, and by the way, thanks for your hard work. I'm sure that was hard to hear about them not being awarded, but thank you. And obviously, Hidden Valley Regional was on that, and it wasn't awarded. And I wonder if there's an opportunity for that to be reconsidered, or?
So the Hidden Valley, we got advice that that project, the way it was, that it's not going to fit into the eligibility categories and that focus. So what we'll be doing is to look for other federal opportunities than the ones that are available through the committee. So each year, and we can look at that because it may change in this next year, each year, the committees, and usually it's the same, but there can be some changes, in what programs we can submit to. We also have a, we have a consultant that assists us with identifying and developing a funding plan for other potential federal grant opportunities. And so we'll be taking that project to identify a funding plan to see if there's other opportunities that we could access.
And I just have a quick follow-up. So is there, there's, I would like an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about some possibilities that have a tie-in even, not only here locally, but have jurisdictional, federal crossover. So where, is it the committee who makes those suggestions? Or is there feedback that you can be provided, or how does that work?
Yes, absolutely. So right now, you know, we work to identify potential projects. We definitely, suggestions or meetings about potential projects from Commissioners, even regional, we can submit regional requests that might include Washoe County, but maybe other counties as well, and with departments, so absolutely, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. It's always good to hear from you. Thank you.
And I know I was bummed about Hidden Valley as well, and I felt like Congressman Amadei really loved that project. So I'm just, yeah, however, we can figure out how to support it, because we can't get Purple Pipe West if we don't go east first. So I know that you just, you know, let us know what we can do to support you in the future. Additionally, as you know, we have that Washoe-Tahoe Transportation Study that the Board commissioned in 2021. There are a lot of projects on there that a Safer Streets for All grant would apply for, and I didn't know we were seeking those out. So I'm so glad to see that on your presentation. And if you could push Washoe-Tahoe up on the list, you know, that would be great, because we've done the study, we know what we need to do. We just need the capital funds to get there. So any, any way I can support you on that would be great. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. If there's no other board questions or comments, we'll move on to the next item. We'll go into consent, we'll do our block. We're going to take a quick bathroom break after that and then go into the rest of the meeting. So item nine, consent items. Do any board members have questions or want to pull any consent items? I'm not seeing that anyone does. I'm looking for a motion on consent, please. Thank you, Commissioner Andriola, looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And I see that we do have public comments, so Madam Clerk.
Julie Young. Nice to be here, thank you. Here in favor of your recommendation in passing the new short-term rental permits, three years. I started the process at the very beginning, and I really do feel like the building and planning department has not been, has not had enough oversight during this process. It's been very difficult, and it's turned to where I feel like the building and planning department has encouraged this like Kafkaesque communication. So the most important thing is about the low cap and the high cap right now. I live out in Truckee River Corridor in Wadsworth, and I don't believe that, that it's, you know, it's a fair reflection of what is happening, you know, like somebody like me that's a granny, you know, and we have to open up our rooms in order to be able to pay the property taxes, comparing those to people who have numerous units. Mr. Wilkies, I hope you that, you listen to some of the things that he said, because there has to be a little bit more oversight in what's happening with the permitting process and, you know, really the fairness in meeting the needs of the people. There is one more thing I would like to see considered in this, and that's that there's some kind of like a cap, like for myself, I'm under the poverty level, okay? And, you know, for me to have to pay the same amount of money that somebody's going to be paying where they're making, you know, 700% more money than I'm making, then that's not really fair. You guys need to be able to look at the needs of the people. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the property that I'm on is where the gas line for Great Basin Transmission is coming through, and there's been no transparency between the county or any of the other public offices and what Great Basin has been able to do. The only way I could get anything done is to be able to have direct contact with FERC. That's the Federal Energy Regulation Commission. This was completely invisible part of the project. And after sitting in my first commission meeting today, I feel like there's a veil, and that, this episode earlier today. and that this episode earlier today, if you would have asked what the needs of the people were, none of that would have happened. And same thing with what's happening with short-term.
Thank you.
Trista Gomez?
Hi, Trista Gomez. Please put my comments on verbatim. This is where I started. This is the old, this is the first reason I ever showed up to the commission meeting is because of a short-term rental issue. So I looked through the items, and I will say, I thank Clara, Ms. Andriola, for meeting with me and talking with, that was nice of her to approach me and ask me about my issues, and I will give her credit for that. I don't know what the outcome of that will be. My concern still is that there are some jurisdictions that really require no permitting fees. And then there's Douglas County, who has a huge public opposition to this, and so they have enormous permitting fees. And then we have Washoe County, who has really, even now, even with this change, as far as I can tell, on the budget items, still some of the, some very, very high fees to permit the STRs. And so it speaks to, is it an inefficient process? Are we using very expensive enforcement mechanisms? Are we using incredibly, like really expensive software trying to handle these things? One of the things that I didn't realize when I met with Ms. Andriola was that there was a large number of STRs up in Incline Village. Obviously, those are going to be very, very different than, you know, like their per-night fee is as much as an STR fee for a full house in Spanish Springs, right? And so then why are, why is there not a discrepancy to create some equity in those homeowners, you know, having some, some better property mechanism so that, just like we just heard, that there is some, some reasonableness around the fees that residents are incurring to keep these houses, or to rent them out, or to make a little bit of money, or to just keep them? Or the other thing is, is that, and I talked about this the first time, the other issue is, is that because it's so hard to evict a long-term tenant, and because they can cost so much money, because they can cause so much damage to your home, I think more people would be much more willing to have long-term renters in their house if there was a better enforcement mechanism to allow for evictions, to keep people from squatting, to, you know, make sure that there's a reasonable and efficient enforcement process for people to be able, because ultimately, people aren't making, you know, a full house payment every month. They're not, they're not getting huge amounts of money. I mean, they have to pay for these bills. And so when somebody's staying in their house without money, they have to pay for that. And so if there was some mechanism to create a better, something for that, that might be a better way to have longer-term housing options instead of the STRs also. And so that's all I'll say.
Thank you.
No one else has signed in, but I do have an email to put on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a motion and a second on consent. Any questions from the board on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, Vice Chair Herman, yes.
I, um, 9B1, I'm thinking maybe we should maybe remove that from there and we bring that back with some, after discussing it and try and fix it so it works for people.
Well, I'm in favor with moving forward because this is actually going to make it better for the concerns that came to this board. But I'm, would you like to hear a staff summary on it, Vice Chair Herman?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any staff that can give us a staff summary on this item?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Trevor Lloyd with Planning and Building. Yeah, I can just give a very brief discussion of what we're proposing with these fee reductions, if you would like. I could also discuss the fines that are also being proposed as well, the additional fines. For, for the most part, it is a fee reduction for property owners who claim their property as a primary residence. That means they're not the ones having multiple residences with the potential with, for multiple short-term rentals. The fee is marginal. It will be a $100 reduction for the initial STR permitting fee. Additionally, we are proposing a $50 reduction for annual renewals. That, that in a nutshell is what we're proposing with, with this particular item.
Any questions, Vice Chair?
Listen to that. Was never real fond of the STR program to begin with, so I'm kind of critical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I understand that the vast majority of these short-term rentals are up in the Incline Village area, Basin, Lake Tahoe. And, and I think the one-size-fits-all isn't working for, for people like Ms. Young, Ms. Young, who just spoke. She's, she's trying to make ends meet with her, with her rental, where other people are renting out their houses to make a profit. So tell me how this is going to help her, her situation.
I don't know her situation in detail. I don't know if she, if this is her primary residence, it will certainly, you know, it will involve a fee reduction that she can take advantage of.
Sure. Could you maybe meet with her?
Absolutely.
After, and find out what her, the details of her situation? Because I kind of have a good feeling of what's taking place up at the, at the lake, where the majority of these are. But there's other little pockets of the short-term rentals around the county that don't, one-size doesn't fit all, for lack of a better word, for their situations. I want to find out how we can help the folks that are trying to make ends meet with this and versus trying to have a profit center and have people buy their real estate for them. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd and, and other staff that I'm sure would like my phone number changed because I've spoken, I know that Ms. Mullen is looking right now, because to the point of the disparity, it's clear that the majority of STRs are in fact at the lake. There's no disputing that. That's a fact. And the fact that I continue to be encouraged of how that can be more equitable and looking at the reduction of some of the things that you've done and moving in that direction is appreciated. But I also realize the balance of how you have to verify someone's income and then opening up that, that door on, hopefully, people know and hear, and I'm not insinuating, someone would misrepresent their, their income, but opening up that door does create complexities. And that's what I heard in working with you all. And I, I just am going to continue to encourage the dialogue of looking at that because I know this isn't a new request, and I am very hopeful that there may be some things that you will see in moving forward with how, and I keep on looking at Ms. Mullen because I've, I've certainly been working a lot with her as well. So I think you're hearing that from others, and I'm hoping that that doesn't necessarily go away. I also really appreciate a lot of the information that has been provided in terms of even looking at what Washoe County, how it compares in terms of the STR rates. One of the unique things I think that everyone should be aware of, if you're not already, is that Washoe County is unique in the sense of it has to essentially, there's two points I think are critical. Number one, this board made a request that you all adhere to in terms of it being not, it would be neutral in terms of the program itself, cost-neutral. One could say that it probably does cost the county a little bit more than just cost-neutral instead of it being perceived as it being income-heavy or funding-heavy, just because of the time spent that maybe staff is not necessarily penciling every hour or minute that's spent on this. But the fact is, is that what makes Washoe County unique is we pay, meaning Washoe County pays 1/13th, you know, of, only receives 1/13th of that fee because other entities in our community receive the rest, which makes that really very unique. I'm not saying that there aren't other jurisdictions that don't have unique costs, but, but not like this. And so the fact that you have adhered to having been cost-neutral and looking at reducing fees and the continued request to look at the equitable piece of making sure that if there is a way that someone who is, and I know I've had this conversation many times, like someone, if there's 90, 93% of the STRs are in, at the lake and only very small are in the other areas in our community, it's clear that those fees are not equitable in terms of the amount of, of the STR, what, what they're actually essentially renting the house for, or home, or unit, or whatever they are renting for. So I, I'm just going to continue to be encouraged and celebrate the day, hopefully soon that you can come back and, and give what you believe is equitable. Because if it ends up costing more and we are going for cost-neutral, then it's really prohibitive, right? I mean, if we start looking at, at the, as staff looking at income levels as an example, and then having to prove your income, and then it can just get complex. So I'm going to stop because I know you all have heard this, but I'm, I'm really asking for that consideration to be explored and to continue to work with you so that we can celebrate you coming back with something very creative, I hope, that would help everyone, not just the folks that are here, but everyone, whether they're currently doing it or whether they're going to explore doing it. So thanks again for all your hard work and look forward to a solution coming forward, hopefully, one day soon.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't remember the exact date, but I, I remember the incident, and we were all in this very room. It was a Tyrolean Village group from, from that subdivision. And we went through this, and at that point in time, I'm on the record, I'm going to go back and review that, but this wasn't an income-neutral. This, this cost the county lots and lots and lots of money. And at that time, I think I said, we're, we're losing money and making lots of people mad. I mean, what's wrong with this picture? Not making any money, and we're making people irritated. So that's, that's historically what I talked about before. And so I want to make sure that, that we're clear on that. This, this is losing a lot of money if you're just looking at a business decision, the county managing this. And I also said on the record that this should be, the county shouldn't be in the business of property management. This is a form of property management. So a question, again, I'll put it back, ask you to put it back on the record. Does anybody in your office own a short-term rental? And I'm only, asking that question not, not for conflict of interest, but for, for context of, do people understand what's involved with this? The next thing I wanted to find out is, is there anybody in your, your office that has a real estate license? And then the next question is, does anybody have a property management permit? Because there's certain things that happen in the real world that maybe folks that are not familiar with in the government world should be aware of. So I, I hold those licenses, and I know about property management, and I know what's involved with that. So, and for years and years and years, some 30, 40 years of that. So, so when I see these kind of questions and I see these kind of restrictions and, and rules and regulations that would never, ever fly in the real world, I'm just wondering, how do we come up with these ideas? So I'm on the record that I'm opposed to the county being in this game, okay? And I'm just putting that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion, and we've done our public comment. I am now looking to have the vote. So all those in favor of the consent, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, I look to you, Vice Chair Herman, to help us with our block.
I believe I'm on air here. Okay. So we block would be for agenda item 10, 11, and 12, and that is a motion.
Okay. Looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on 10, 11, or 12?
No, we do not.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
I've got a quick question.
Yes.
On, on number 12. What, what's going to happen with those funds that, that are coming back? The funds that weren't redo, reused and they'll be coming back, are they going to be, do we have an allocation for them already, or is there contemplation where that, where these funds that are coming back to us or the previously allocated funds, where, since they're coming back to us, what, what is the expectation of how those will be used? What other projects, do we have anything else in, in place that might be ready to go that we could use this money with? If so, could you share that with us?
Ms. Enfield, thank you.
For the record, Gabrielle Enfield, Community Reinvestment Manager. So this de-obligation is strategically placed on the agenda prior to the other two agenda items that provide allocation to, to new projects. So the amount of this de-obligation is included and considered when we calculated the allocations in item 13 and 14. So in the future, as, as I mentioned in my presentation, we expect that we may get more de-obligations. We will bring those de-obligations forward to adjust and for your information and so you are aware of all the changes as we make them. And then we'll be looking to make further allocations. At this point in time, there is not any list or determine new projects for any potential future de-obligations. But this de-obligation in item number 12 is distributed in the next two items and is calculated in the, the amount that I said remaining, that is reduced, it's all calculated together.
Sure. Follow-up question. So if these are coming back to us, are they going to be held in a separate account of some type? These don't anyhow get into the general account at all?
So all of the funds are in, in a, in a fund. And then as we allocate them, the budget is allocated to the internal order. And then when we de-obligate that fund, budget is moved out of that internal order and back into the general unallocated component of the accounting. Our finance person could tell you more of the terms, but...
These funds are being recommended for expenditure in item 15 and 14.
Absolutely. Yes, correct.
So we're, if, if the board moves forward with those items, they'll, that de-obligated money will be...
Then the balance will be the $400,000 that was identified in the presentation, $407,000.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions or comments on the block vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And a motion passes unanimously. We are now going to take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 1:35, and we will see you all soon. We'll come back at one thirty-five and we will see you all soon. Well, it's one thirty-five. I will bring the Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. And Manager Brown, if you'll help us move into item thirteen, please.
Test, okay. Item thirteen is a recommendation in accordance with NRS 244 dot one five oh five to approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund in the amount of two million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Approve associated resolutions and authorize the county manager to sign necessary award documents for the following seven projects awarded to government entities and nonprofit organizations created for charitable, religious, or educational purposes. So the, the seven items are listed in the staff report.
Thank you very much. And now I look to the board on questions for staff or comments. Vice Chair Herman? Okay, Commissioner Garcia?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you. I'm, I'm very supportive of all the initiatives and missions of item number thirteen. I do have some questions about item five of that list. So if you want to do public comment first or however you want to set it up, I'm amenable to that.
Maybe it would be helpful to have staff address the questions. That way, public comment can speak to that, knowing that. Go ahead, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Gabrielle, for all your hard work. I have had the opportunity to serve as a member of the Washoe County Animal Services Advisory Board for over a year now. And I'm one of many representatives on that body. And it's advisory in nature, but through the course of the year and a half, I've had the opportunity to get to know and become familiar with the different missions and outreach efforts that many different organizations take in regard to this particular space. So I was just curious if you could provide a little bit of the background on how the, the work with Nevada Humane Society, how that conversation started and, and how we got to where we are today.
For the record, Gabrielle Enfield, Community Reinvestment Manager. So this is a project that was identified as a community need coming through a county department and work with Assistant County Manager Dave Solaro. So working with him, this has been an identified need across many organizations. And the identification of kind of where that went and what was the scope of that project was really focused on, you know, what is the need as well as what organization has the capacity to implement this kind of a program. It's going to be very specific with a vet, a vet, as well as a mobile spay and neuter vehicle. So concentrating that in an organization that's able to implement and has that capacity as a larger organization was identified as the most effective and, cost-effective and way to implement this program.
Does the MASH, the Mobile Animal Surgical Hospital, already exist, the mobile unit?
So they're upgrading and it, they're, and actually I can, I can let the grantee focus on really on more of the scope of work and the details on how they will be implementing it, that'll help.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Good afternoon. Jereline Bryant, CEO of Nevada Humane Society, for the record. So the question was, how would we be implementing that number of surgeries and in what form? Okay, through a variety of ways. We have an established medical clinic at the Humane Society that currently staffs about twenty-five employees. And that is how we perform all of the surgeries that we currently do for the animals in our care and provide, address their medical needs. So some of those additional spay and neuter surgeries through this grant would happen through our clinic. They would also happen through our mobile spay and neuter vehicle, which is a big van that is specially equipped to do surgeries inside of it. A MASH clinic is a mobile animal surgical hospital and that is a, it's quite a thing to see. It's a pop-up hospital that you would do, you know, in a temporary fashion under big tents in our parking lot where we would be able to do in large number of animals through, over a short period of time. So maybe about eight hundred animals over a four-day period. And those are very effective in addressing, again, a, a large number of animals and doing it in a relatively short period of time. So they're, they're not, they're not easy to do. You have to have, be, you know, have a specialized team. You have to have, you know, members of your staff that are well-versed in, in those types of clinics, but they are very successful. And I ran those when I was running the Maui Humane Society and it was very beneficial to our community.
So historically, we have not been able to provide those MASH clinic opportunities?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know historically if that has ever happened in Washoe County. I'm not sure. I think in years past, when the, when the Nevada Humane Society had the robust spay and neuter program, it was mainly happening through the clinic that is in the facility and through the mobile vehicle.
Okay.
So I, I think for us, we're looking at a multi-pronged approach. You know, also being able to go out into underserved areas of Washoe County and where maybe people have challenges with transportation and being able to sterilize animals where they're at, too.
And how active or productive is your current mobile clinic services? Or your, yeah, I know you do the onsite surgeries at your site.
We are not currently using our mobile spay and neuter vehicle.
Okay. And how long has that been out of operation or not being utilized?
You know, I couldn't, and I, not since I've been at the Humane Society and I don't know when prior to that. I think with the pandemic, and this was, this was a national situation, most all animal shelters discontinued their public spay and neuter services. So I'm not sure when that unit had been used. But it is in good shape and we are, you know, I mean, I just inspected it recently and it's...
And it's operational?
Yeah, mhm.
Okay. Those are the questions I have at the moment. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andriella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there any type of match that NHS is providing in this with this funding?
There, the, the cost of this program, for that number of surgeries, does exceed the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so Nevada Humane Society will be providing some funds for some of the publicly, for some of the publicly owned animals, there will be a, a small fee, not nearly what it would be at a clinic. And then again, the vouchers for the other organizations, the animal welfare organizations, there would be no cost to them as long as those animals come from Washoe County.
I...
So we do have skin in the game.
No, I understand. I, I appreciate the voucher. When you had spoken before, you mentioned the voucher. So thanks for bringing that up. When, when you just mentioned that other entities, could you explain that voucher is another, will the actual entity who's performing the spay and neuter, the other entity be reimbursed or what does that mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
To clarify, the surgeries would happen at Nevada Humane Society. The vouchers would be given to other animal welfare organizations. When I say entities, so maybe rescues or, you know, it would be other rescues or like Tracy Dean, her Community Cats program, they would receive vouchers so that there would be no cost to them to get those animals sterilized, even, even the lower monetary, even the lower cost that would be passed, passed on to owners of animals in our community. But I think one aspect that is really important to note is that the, a portion of this funding allows the Nevada Humane Society to get to reinstate a program that was in existence. And, and so even when the grant funds are exhausted at the end of 2026, that would allow us to continue the program because we would have the equipment and the staff in place. This is a jumpstart for our community and for, for this program. We would not, our intention is not to discontinue the program when the grant funds are exhausted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got some, a few questions.
I've got some, a few questions about the vouchers. And you kind of covered a little bit of that now. So, other, other entities would be able to locate or identify animals to send your way? Or would the vouchers be used for, in a private setting where, where ABC Veterinary Hospital does the work and you reimburse them? Is that, is that a voucher type?
No, we aren't looking at that. And I will say that we're, we're working out those details. Those details are not completely fleshed out because we want it to really benefit our community and the other animal welfare organizations in our community. So, we wouldn't give a voucher for them to take to a private clinic because that, that doesn't help the situation. The cost is too high. That voucher would be to come to the Nevada Humane Society and, and that, as long as it is an animal, they're an animal welfare organization, where maybe they have transferred that animal out of Washoe County Regional Animal Services, or maybe it's a Community Cat that, that the Community Cats Program has trapped in our community, then there is no cost. For owned animals, there would be a low, you know, monetary cost to them that wouldn't even compare to what would be at a private clinic. And that's what allows this program to continue on and be sustainable.
Some follow-up questions. So, if this becomes very successful, is there a point in time where you might run out of capacity to do, do this type of work? And then, what would happen? Do we have a lottery system for folks that are bringing animals to you? How, how are we going to manage the intake of these, these animals as far as who gets theirs done first and who gets on the list? And can you give us a little bit of?
It would, so as far as capacity, it would be a scheduling system. And just like we currently do, but at a lower volume, those appointments would become available, well, in a variety of ways. It depends on how we're administering the surgeries. So, if it was through our clinic, there would be a schedule typically that they could go online and, just like at the DMV, and you could schedule your appointment. If it was a MASH clinic, then we would open that up for scheduling. They would typically probably call in and then we would be able to schedule them on whichever day we were doing those surgeries. If it was the mobile surgical unit, it, it really depends because we would probably take, oftentimes, we would take that out to a particular zip code. And then, we would market it in that zip code and let the residents in that zip code that maybe are, you know, challenged with transportation, schedule those appointments. And so, that, it's a lot of surgeries. And we haven't had that available in this community for a number of years. And while I think that there is quite a demand, I think because of the number of surgeries that we would be looking at doing, it wouldn't be quite the bottleneck that we might imagine it would be.
Sure. I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, of course.
And so.
I welcome the questions.
With low, is this low-cost spaying and neutering? Is there going to be any preferential treatment for seniors? Seniors on fixed incomes and they need an animal fixed. Can they, can they get some type of a, a way to get in the line and move up quicker?
Oh, of course.
I mean, are we going to have different lanes for different, different folks here?
We don't have that detail worked out, but, you know, we are always here to help our community, especially the ones in our community that have animals that really do have challenges, whether it's financial, whether it's with transportation. Those are not unique situations and we deal with those on a daily basis.
Have you talked, you brought up transportation a couple of times and I didn't, but you did.
Yeah.
So, we're going to talk about that a little bit. What about a partnership with the RTC? You know, they've got the vouchers and they've got Uber rides and lifts for, for certain folks. If you talk to them and maybe coordinate so, so you don't have to go to the people. The people can come to you through other public transportation that's available at discounted prices or vouchers. Again, back to the seniors.
Yeah, I think that is a great idea and we're open to any of it. The, we, we have the spay and neuter van. I mean, it's a big vehicle. It is set up to be able to, to leave our campus and go into communities that are under-resourced and be able to address the needs of the animals in those under-resourced areas where they're at. But that is different than, I think, I think there's a variety of needs. If it's just one-offs where somebody needs transportation for their animal to get it in, to get that spay or neuter surgery, I think that we are open to any and all options.
Sure. I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah.
Much be, be much more effective to have RTC bring somebody to you than you fire up the mobile unit and drive around the county.
Sure. And I think, well, absolutely. And I think it depends on, on what that need is. Again, if we're going into a particular community where, because that, that is not uncommon. Many communities, many humane societies and animal shelters have mobile units. And that is an effective way of, of addressing a certain area, zip code, neighborhood that maybe has a higher number of animals that needs to be sterilized. And we could do thirty right then in a day without the transportation of going back and forth. But that is different than a senior or maybe a veteran that just needs help with transportation.
Sure, sure. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just talking.
That's okay.
What, what type of animals are we talking about?
Dogs and cats.
So, nothing else?
Nothing else.
Somebody has a bunny that needs to be fixed? Or a goat?
Not, no.
Or a swine?
No.
Birds? Can you spay or neuter birds? I think you can.
That's a good question.
So, just.
Dogs and cats. That is, that is where we are seeing the overpopulation crisis in our community and across the country is primarily with dogs and cats.
But somebody may want to have their goat fixed or sheep or something.
Yeah.
Are we opening ourselves up to any kind of discrimination if somebody says that you won't work on my animal, but you worked on those animals?
There are veterinarians, they are large animal veterinarians that do those types of surgeries. My veterinarians do not do those types of surgeries. We will do small animals, but that's pretty specialized and.
So, guinea pigs and rabbits would be considered small animals that could be done?
Yes.
All right. Very well.
But we wouldn't do those in a high-volume setting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board questions? I'm not seeing any. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
On that item. We'll now call up a public comment, Madam Clerk.
Tracy Dean? Okay. Andrea Caricelli?
Oh, just dropping the paperwork. Okay. Okay. Then we'll go to the next person.
Dawn Pelt.
Chief Pelt, you've been so patient. Thank you so much.
Thank you. But on behalf of the Pyramid Lake Fire Rescue EMS personnel and the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, we would like to thank this Board of Commissioners for its continued support and our ability to assist the wonderful people of Gerlach Empire and Vaya. One of the things we do in the fire service, like the military and law enforcement, to show our appreciation to folks who have helped us out and, and as a reward to those things, we issue what's called challenge coins. This year, our 2024 challenge coin has all six communities that the tribal fire rescue EMS program provides services to. That's the tribal residents of Nixon, Sutcliffe, and Wadsworth, as well as the good folks of Gerlach Empire and Vaya. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I would like to be able to approach the dais to give each and every one of you one of our brand-new 2024 challenge coins. And thank you for your support.
Oh, thank you, Chief. Absolutely. And I don't know if you can figure out how to open that gate there, but yes, feel free to approach the dais. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and for being so patient with us. Madam Clerk, back to you.
Penny Brock?
Penny Brock, for the record, what we just saw was what this COVID money was all about, we the people. I looked up the guidelines, how this money is to be distributed. It says, "Care should be taken to avoid creating new programs or add-on to existing programs that require ongoing financial commitment." On this list, number four is a paralegal program, higher temporary paralegals. How does that match up with the guidelines? Number two, over and over, it emphasizes investment in critical infrastructure. I look at number five about the community spay and neuter program. It looks like it's creating, adding on to this existing program. How are you going to fund it? This does not support private business. Secondly, I see number six, you're giving money to Rancho San Rafael. More money to them. What about South Valley's Regional Park? It's been a park since 1990. It's largely undeveloped. We need that park developed for all kinds of reasons. The kids are growing up. The dogs don't have their walk park. The grandpas and grandmas don't have appropriate space to walk. There's not appropriate parking. When do we get South Valley's Regional Park developed? I've been told it's going to cost $100 million. Next, we look at number seven, which is a recruitment incentive. To the Washoe County Recruitment and Retention Incentive Program, this is going to the county budget. Our county budget is already getting $1.1 billion. Why, you might say, well, that's not very much money. It says, "To amend the existing award by $15,000 for a total amount of $165,000." You know what? That would go a long ways at the South Valley's Regional Park. So, I feel that what's on this list may not be meeting the guidelines. That could be reported, I believe, to the Treasury Department or somewhere, someone like that back in Washington. They want to make sure these funds are appropriately used. I didn't know about these guidelines until August. And I've sat here, meeting after meeting, listening to things that probably should not have been funded under these COVID funds. So, I would ask you to reconsider number seven, especially possibly number four. And I don't know about that community spay and neuter project. It's for the, it's to be for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, I'm going to bring it back to the board. And Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm still kind of chewing on 13.5, the community spay and neuter project. And I just wanted to kind of toss out my ideas to my fellow commissioners to see if there was any further discussion. But here's kind of where I'm at. I appreciate the vision that NHS has brought to the table of, of bringing MASH, the concept of MASH clinics to our region and to get the mobile clinic back up and running after four years now approximately. I appreciate the historical context there. And for the folks that don't serve on this advisory board, we, overpopulation is happening across the nation. We have a national veterinary shortage. It's really difficult to fill not only those vet positions, but also other vet techs. The surgery equipment is expensive and it's needed in order for these to be successful programs. And so, for example, even in our own side of the house with animal services, we have just brought on a new veterinarian. But we still don't even have our own equipment to conduct these surgeries. And so, that's coming hopefully soon. But largely, this overpopulation issue has been dealt with in a private and nonprofit kind of collaboration throughout the country. So, we're not unique in that. I, I do have some concerns and I'll just kind of lay it out there. I was hoping for a little bit more level of detail on the, you know, who would be eligible to participate, partners, the voucher program, and so forth. I do appreciate you being here today to answer some of our questions. But the bottom-line question for me is whether or not we expand the capacity of one nonprofit versus expanding the capacity of those who are already doing this work and, and, and living this out day-to-day in their spa, in this space. And so, I've been, you know, reading the emails and talking to constituents and, and trying to wrestle with that notion. And to me, where I'm at right now is Nevada Humane Society is one of our partners. We need them to be a healthy organization for the Washoe County Animal Services side of the house to flow, to have a healthy flow of animals. So, we rely heavily on them being successful because their success is our success. But that said, we also have some real strong leaders that haven't taken a break from the spay and neuter over the course, you know, since the pandemic. We've got options, veterinary care, SPCA in Northern Nevada. I just am struggling with the idea of bolstering one partner when we already have folks that are doing this work and doing it successfully. And that's just what I wanted to throw out to my other commissioners for discussion if possible.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Point of order. I, I did want to just say, those can be considered, but the call, the question is only about the obligation of these funds, not where they might alternatively go. So, the only question before you today is whether to approve or deny. Thank you.
And I, I was thinking, to bring it back to you, Commissioner Garcia, and your thoughts. Are you suggesting that we table that piece, item five, until you have a bit more information or staff, you know, go back to these other partners and bring some other options to the board, understanding that we probably will have de-obligation of funds and maybe we can help these other organizations? But we, I don't know. We don't know. So, would you, is that one of your proposals or where are you at?
I guess my question is, if I asked, if we approve all items except for item five of the list, would that create any possibility that this wouldn't be a priority in the next round of funding? Because that is not my intent. We have a huge crisis on our hands.
Yeah.
And I don't want us tabling this, the community spay and neuter project, and then put it at risk of getting on the chopping block.
Right. And I think that's kind of, it will go with your motion. You can also ask at the end of the meeting that the other de-obligated funds come back on some other priority as well, if you are comfortable moving forward with five. But I think you can also table five or ask that more work be done on five, but that it's not, not to let it go and to bring it. Because we only have so much time. We have to obligate these by December. So, that's another option today. And you can kind of craft your motion that way.
Okay. Well, I move to approve all items one, two, three, four, six, seven, as stated in the staff report. And I would like to table item five, bring it back, have staff take a look at it again and prioritize it in the next round of funding.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a second on that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Clark? And Commissioner Clark, I had you sign in for comments after the motion. Would you like to make your comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a comment. And I'm looking at item number four. And I'm a big supporter of the Public Defender's Office. And I'd like to make sure that our next budget that's coming up in the near future, that they get the proper staffing that will make this not just a temporary fix for their office. So, I'm, I'd like to. So uh, I'm, I'd like to get that on the record, that I think that the Public Defender's Office is is uh doing outstanding work and understaffed and underfunded. And that's just my opinion of of that particular department. And so um, I just want to get that on the record, that uh, I hope that they're properly staffed in future budget considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that great discussion. We'll now move into item fourteen, Manager Brown.
Item fourteen is reconsideration of the approval to allocate American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund in the total amount of 3 million 197 uh 3 million 197,900 dollars for uh the 12 projects awarded to government entities or nonprofit organizations created for charitable, religious, or educational purposes as identified in the staff report.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Clark asked for this item to come back before the board, so I'll hand it over to you, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I did ask for this to be reconsidered. And if you'll, anybody wants to go and fact check me and look uh on the last time we had this at our commission meeting, two, three meetings ago, whenever it was, well, I don't have the date memorized. But I uh, I was prompted by the clerk to vote because I was just really on the fence, not just about, about some of these items. Some of these items were needed, desperately needed, positive, and other things were uh, gave me heartburn. And so, but I voted for it because of the positive things in it. And then as soon as the meeting was over and for, and up until now, there's still constant uh communication between the public and myself about uh best use, highest and best use of these funds. And so the highest and best use of the funds, uh, I don't think were properly discussed and properly dis, uh, commented on. And I think the uh, the public had just one issue that they were focused on out of this, this whole uh group of uh items that we voted on, and and that's the Seven Magic Mountains. Folks, uh, working class people, people that enjoy art. I enjoy art. I'm a member of the museum. I'm hoping that I'm bringing this up doesn't keep me barred from going to the art museum in the future. Saying that tongue in cheek, obviously. But uh, the issue is highest and best use. People don't think that they, that this county should spend the type of funds that that they're requesting for, for this rock art. You know, art's in the eye of the beholder. Not everybody agrees with art. I mean, that's just, that's just the nature of what it is. Art is in the eye of the beholder. And uh, other people, and seniors included, are thinking, what's the highest and best use for for this money? It's been brought up numerous times that it's great for tourism. It brings lots of folks to Las Vegas. I, I don't know if we can fact check that. Is there somebody out there with a, with a meter, having everybody that goes onto the site, signing in to, to prove how many people are going there? Who knows if, if that's, if that's true or not. But I do know that uh, it's a concern of the citizens here. But if it is a tourist attraction, if it is something that brings tourism here, we should maybe having, have RSCVA uh ask for, ask them for some funds, see if they want to invest in the tourism uh draw. So uh, it's a big uh, it's a big concern with folks. It's been brought up. It's been talked about continuously since that time. Social media is talking about it. Lots of folks are unhappy about this. So um, you know, I'd be willing to uh, vote on the other items on, on this list as a block. But uh, I, I think that we need to remove the uh Seven Magic Mountains, the relocation and install uh part of this, component of this uh block vote and uh, and uh, put that on a separate uh discussion and separate vote. So that's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And Vice Chair Herman.
Um, I, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I agree totally with what Commissioner Clark said. So I, I would not vote for the whole thing if I had to include that.
Okay. Any other board comments? Commissioner Andriola.
May I ask legal, just, you, you clarified on the last item and you, you answered, I believe, the question I'm going to ask, but I just want clarification. So um, really, the, in this case, we'll just say the seven, item number four, item number 14.4. If um, you were looking at contingencies, and I will just throw this out. There are a lot of unknowns with 14.4, specifically in terms of um additional things that need to happen in order for this project to be um brought here. And Mr. Walker, I think, did an eloquent job in terms of not only supporting the credibility, but citing all of the um economic uh resources that um have this project, which is, you know, globally recognized um in, in Las Vegas. Just for full disclosure, I've actually visited this and it is a pretty magical place for sure. But my question is, is that if, for instance, um, the location couldn't be identified, the matching funds or the funds that are also needed to move the rocks, the artists, for instance, you know, who has full ownership, um, has some concerns or there's some, some hurdles and they don't, it doesn't come to fruition. Can we put a contingency on item five if that doesn't happen? If we wanted the funds to actually go maybe to be considered in, in another area? Or is it an up or down, just like you had mentioned before?
It's up or down.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the additional clarification.
But, Manager Brown, yeah, you go ahead.
But Commissioner, I, if, with all of these projects, if something goes sideways and the provider isn't able to perform under the terms of our agreement with them, the money does not get spent and it gets reallocated in the fashion that Gabrielle mentioned earlier. So keep that in mind.
Thank you for that. But um, we are in, you know, the sand's running out of the hourglass at a pretty fast pace. And if the Chair is okay, may we ask Mr. Walker a question?
Sure.
If, if we could ask Mr. Walker a question. Thank you. And by the way, thanks again for all this credibility to talk, you know, talk about the economic support of this project and what it can bring to the region, even though I know Northern Nevada is different than Southern Nevada, but still, to have that kind of global recognition. So I appreciate all of that. But my question to you is, what do you believe the timeframe realistically is to, you know, put into place some of these things that I know that you're currently working on? Like location and, and partners and additional funding and?
Yes, uh, thank you. David Walker, CEO of the Nevada Museum of Art, for the record. I have been speaking with Gabrielle. We believe we could have a uh, a direction established by the end of December. Uh, we do need to bring the artist out from New York uh to look at uh sites that we're look, looking at right now. Ideally, we would like to see it cited on the uh Pyramid Lake uh Pai, tribal land. Uh, we have met with the tribal council. Uh, there's excitement about potentially having it there. Certainly, the um economic benefits are clear. Uh, this would be like uh Burning Man year round to some extent. But uh, we would not need to expend any monies, though, uh, at all, you know, over the next six months. But we do need to have some sense of if this is a uh realistic uh direction for the project. We are pursuing one in Southern Nevada as well, uh, where there is money. And I'm not going to get into that right now. It's private. But um, you know, it's, it's interesting. The um, all the noise that came out of Northern Nevada after the last public meeting about regarding the allocation of funds to potentially help bring Seven Magic Mountains up here. There was a hundred times that down in Las Vegas and it was the opposite. It was sadness. People were upset. They couldn't understand why it had to be moved. Uh, so, and Commissioner Clark, by the way, the BLM has a counter buried uh on the pathway as you walk to, from the parking lot to Seven Magic Mountains. So that's, those numbers are accurate numbers. They're not made up numbers. Uh, that's part of our obligation with that being on three acres of uh federal land there. Uh, so that's where we are right now. And um, I got to tell you, um, I'm just going to say this. I think you all know we're making a $60 million investment in our beautiful new museum here in Reno, in Washoe County. Uh, we've raised 57 million. We're getting close to the finish line. We're going to be done with construction at the end of the year. And we open to the public in March. Uh, we have a couple more million dollars to go. And uh, and I've told Commissioner Hill and others that um, this is not a good time for me to go down a rabbit hole and to get sideways with our community. And so I want to respect the um, the feedback that you've received. I happen to think I've seen, I've been involved with Seven Magic Mountains for over 10 years. Uh, I'm deeply vested in it, uh, but it's not mine and it's not the museums. Uh, this is something that has had a lot of public support. It's obviously a proven um driver of tourism and of revenues. And uh, if this is something that um I need to fight for, for the next six months, it's not a good time for me to do that. So um, I'm happy to continue answering questions about its value. Um, I think it would be magnificent uh here in Northern Nevada. It does have to move from where it is. Uh, somebody made a public comment earlier that he knew someone who could create that for a hundred thousand dollars. Guess what? It costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repaint it every two years. So we have a lot of misinformation, a lot of feelings out there, uh, and uh, not an appreciation for the uh, kind of the bottom line, which is its performance. And so it's an investment, potentially, and something that will attract people to our region for years and years to come. It will bring money to the city. It will bring money to the county. It'll do exactly what the RSCVA likes to do. But there's been nothing like this that we've had up here in Northern Nevada ever. And so that's, you know, that's kind of where we are. But if there's more questions, I'm happy to continue to.
I just have a follow-up. Um, thanks for giving at least a, a timeline that essentially, if it looked like some of the other things didn't fall into place, that you're working on, that um, you've shared with Ms. Enfield that you should know something by December of 2024. Just making sure.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and if for whatever reason, I'm hoping that you would, if, if you saw some serious roadblocks, that you would immediately let Ms. Enfield know, to the county manager's point, that if it looks like that it really can't move forward, for whatever the reason is, um, in a timely fashion. Because as you know, the funds have to be expended by 1231, 2026. And so um, I certainly know that there are um, you know, there's never enough fun, funds for everything. But I think being respectful, and I know that your character is just that, and you care about this community a lot. And so that's what I would ask, is that the minute it really looks like the barriers are no longer feasible, that um, that you let Ms. Enfield know so that um, other decisions can be made. I do, again, want to, you know, commend you and others. I, I too have heard um, a lot of uh feedback from my constituents. And it is interesting. I have heard support, actually. And I've also heard um, a lot of misinformation. And as I shared with you, I, I actually have visited this twice. So it is a pretty magical place. I'm very hopeful to hear that the Pyramid, um, you know, Lake Tribe is actually looking at that. And I hope seriously. I think that would be amazing. And I'm guessing their interest, I know you're not speaking for them or not committing in any way, but to have something like that, that's globally recognized with this artist and bringing um more tourism to even that culture. And I think that fits so well in being there myself and, and really having it be a magical place. So um, thank you for indulging all the questions. Thanks for all your time here today, by the way. Just waiting for this item, but um, really thank you for this detail. Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other board members? Okay, Commissioner Clark.
Yes, you know, I, I support the museum and, and I think that this, this body has supported the museum with other donations. And I think that we should find a way to continue to do that. So I'm just making a comment. You, you don't have to respond to this. I'm not asking any questions. I think there should be a bookend to the uh, the last vote that we just had. I think we should vote on the other items here. Uh, we only have a choice. It's either an up or down per the DA's uh advice and counsel. And so I would like to make a recommendation that we vote for everything except for this. We table this. And the misinformation that's out there, let's address that. Let's have a meeting where this is an agenda item, where people know they can come and uh voice their opinion and also get educated on what, on what, what they think is happening and what you know is happening. And share this and then have an educational kind of a meeting with, with folks. And uh, you know, let's see if we can sell the, sell the public on this idea. And um, that's what I'm suggesting. So that's my thoughts, is vote on these other items, get them moving along where, where they need to go. And bring this back as an individual item, the same way we're going to do with the uh, the, the last item that we just voted on. And uh, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other commission comments? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, public comment.
Penny Brock.
I'm sorry?
I called Penny Brock.
Public comment.
For a public comment.
Penny Brock, for the record, as you know, Northern Nevada is different than Southern Nevada. What we have here in Washoe County is we have struggling families. Our senior population is struggling financially. You heard a senior earlier today talking about she had to open her home for STRs so she can pay her property tax bill. I think this is what concerns our county, is because we're living the reality of Bidenomics, the inflation. And when our taxpayers, our citizens hear that, that you want to spend $500,000 for the rock art, that's what upsets them because they look around and they see so many other needs dealing with people. They want people supported, not rocks. And I'm sure if everything was funded as it should be, that perhaps our community would welcome the rocks with open arms. But right now, we want to take care of our neighbors and our citizens. We want our South Valley's Regional Park developed. This is for the kids and for the people out there. When we have real needs, we don't have extra money to spend on rocks, no matter how famous they may be in Clark County. That's wonderful. Do you know that the Clark County Commission gives the rock art $50,000 a year for maintenance? I don't see that mentioned here. Who's going to fund that? Where's that going to come from? According to the COVID guidelines, there's not to be that kind of an existing expense going on. So I think it might be wise if you brought this back again for more public comment out of fairness to we the taxpayers, to what we, the people of Washoe County, want the COVID funds spent on. They don't want it spent on the rocks right now. I appreciate the art museum director's offer to pull this off the table. I think that's the right thing to do. I think he's sensing that Washoe County is different than Clark County. I think he's sensing that Washoe County is different than Clark County. We have needs of real people. Right now, our need is not rocks, but our need is to take care of our people in Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff Neillis, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I couldn't help myself. You know, what was the target of the fake pandemic? Was it seniors, wasn't it? Yeah. We saw over in, we saw over in Governor Cuomo's state, you know, how they, they put people sick with the coronavirus into, you know, they required Medicaid-supported facilities to take sick people. And it killed a lot of people there, too. I think this should be, like other people have mentioned, this should go to, this amount of money should go to the seniors. And I do have some questions, too, about it being put on Paiute Indian land property. Are you guys aware that now to go fishing, and I don't fish on Pyramid Lake, but I met a gal who does, and she goes out there quite often. It costs her $25 every time she launches her boat. And are the Indian tribal members going to say, no, we're not going to charge a fee to our entrance? So, there's a lot of questions there. And in reality, you know, this doesn't really look good for the County Commission, because when you look at these, and it may be it's magical if you go there, but all it is is painted rocks. I mean, I think I could repaint them for a lot less than $150,000 a year. It's like my, my daughter got a quote on her house, $40,000 to paint it. And so, I painted it for her for about 500 bucks, you know? So, there's ways to do things cheaper. But, yeah, I recommend that you do, Commissioner Clark suggested and table this and have more public comment.
Thank you. No one else signed in? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other Commissioner comments? I'm not seeing. Commissioner Clark?
Thanks again. Again, we're supposed to just vote on the item, up or down. But if we had an opportunity to use these funds in the highest and best use, I think one of the things, and we should be reminded, there was just a massive fire here. We kind of dodged the bullet. It kind of didn't go over the hill to Incline Village. I think we should be looking at this money as preparing an evacuation study for the folks at Incline Village. I think that would, might be the highest, some of the highest and best use of this. It was made, mentioned by one of the county spokespersons, that the county didn't have enough money to do an evacuation plan. And I think that if we don't invest in this art installation and we invest in an evacuation plan, we might actually be fulfilling the guidelines that Ms. Brock brought up about the use of the money and the highest and best use and protecting a lot of folks. So, we have a choice between looking at art or protecting folks. I'm going to vote protect folks. That being said, I think in this particular day, today, we should vote on these other items, pull this one and table it and bring it back for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Commissioner Andriola?
I, I am fine with, if the body wants to, you know, pull that item and vote up or down, because we're clear on that. But the reality is, is that we have a lot of information, and you could say that about every single one of these items. The reality is, is that Ms. Enfield, you do a great job in terms of following guidelines and compliance. And we all, I think, have opportunities that we would like for consideration. As an example, I would love a shooting facility at the Golden Eagle Regional Park. And I'm sure all of us, if we took the time, and I think we'll be able to even go into more detail when we have our strategic planning meeting. But in terms of this item, the reality is, is that there is, Mr. Walker was very clear that there, his commitment is, if there's any indication, number one, we have a deadline. Number two, there's an opportunity then. If it doesn't look like it's going to pan out even prior to that deadline, Mr. Walker will let Ms. Enfield know. Those funds would then become available. And the reality is, we have the data. And yes, the South is different than the North, but I think there's opportunities in the North. Having at the, having the tribe or any other place look at it, they can work out all those details. Those are the things that are important for the sustainability. There's nothing in here that obligates the county to repaint it or maintenance or anything like that. So, I think giving this world-recognized artist and the enthusiasm that Mr. Walker shared in this project, you know, allows that particular time to only be for a short period. So, it's not like we're, if it falls through, it's coming back. And then, those opportunities can be looked at accordingly. So, I just wanted to clarify that. We have a lot of information and we need them, meaning Mr. Walker, to actually continue to do that due diligence and keep Ms. Enfield informed. And thank you, Ms. Enfield, again, for making sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and that we follow all the compliance. And so, some projects may not actually meet that. We don't know. But we know this does. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And I'm going to try to take a stab at a motion here. Move to approve the allocation of ARPA funds in the total of amount of $3,197,900 for the 12 projects as described in the staff report. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions from the board on that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes three to two. Thank you very much. We will now move into the public hearing, part of our agenda, item 15. And I will turn this over to the clerk.
Okay. If this is approved, it will be ordinance number 1732. An ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110 Development Code, in Article 319 Short Term Rentals (STRs) by modifying various sections in order to clarify maximum occupancy limitations associated with an STR permit. Limit STRs to one parcel, one per parcel in the Tahoe Planning Area. Prohibit new STRs and accessory dwellings in the Tahoe Planning Area. Clarify when an STR permit must be relinquished. Remove requirement for an outdoor fireplace permit from the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. Allow for an updated STR permit renewal date via payment of a prorated renewal fee. Remove the requirement for assigned notary for STR renewal applications. Clarify that a new STR permit is required with each change of parcel ownership. Grant a 30-day automatic grace period for renewals with a possible additional 30-day discretionary grace period that may be granted by the Director of Planning and Building. And clarify violation and revocation regulations and by amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 125 Administrative Enforcement Code, to reduce the appeal period for STR stop activity orders from 30 days to 14 days and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. This was Bill Number 1921.
And it's ordinance number 1732? Is that what you said? Okay, good.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And this is our second reading, so we have discussed this as a board, but if folks want a staff overview, please let me know. I'm not seeing that anyone does. With that, I do want to just say how thankful I am to the team, the planning team, the community services team. Your work on this, I know, is exhaustive. And we have been tweaking this ordinance since 2021, when it first was adopted by this board, and we promised the community we'd continue to tweak it. And I feel like you've heard the community in Tahoe loud and clear, and you made some really great changes with the second reading. And you heard from also our other commissioners who still want additional tweaks. And it's a new world, these short-term rentals. It's a new world. So, we're going to continue to make the changes. And what I love about our team is nothing set in stone, and we're going to continue to adapt to see how we can best protect our community, but also make sure that we have common sense regulations and we're not overburdening folks. So, I think the balance is there, and I just commend the team, and I really want to say a big thanks to you. Looking to the board to see if anyone has any other comments or questions. Commissioner Andriola?
I always feel obligated to say thank you a million times, because you really have done a great job. And although there is additional exploration paths, I do really want to extend a big thank you.
Thank you. With that, and is there any public comment?
No one has signed in.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. To, I'm looking to the board, and I'm, Commissioner Andriola, do you want to do it? Okay. I will, I will move to adopt ordinance number 1732 as outlined in the staff report. Looking for a second.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And any questions or comments on the motion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes three to one with Commissioner Clark gone for that vote. So, we now will, we are at the end of our scheduled public hearings. We're now going to go to our final public comment. Manager Brown?
Item 16 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk?
Penny Brock, for the record. Back to election integrity issue. On September 12th, it was reported by Town Hall that Michigan and Nevada face election integrity lawsuits from the RNC. We know that in May, PLIF out of Washington DC filed a lawsuit against Carrie Anne Burgess, our Register of Voters. The issue was over allowing voter registration at commercial addresses. A month later, in June, they filed in Clark County for the same reason. Clark County heard the case in August, and they won. They won, that people from commercial addresses cannot vote in elections. However, nothing has happened up here in Washoe County. Why not? Why don't we have a judge that will hear this case? The RNC filed this lawsuit. In Nevada, it's about, says on Wednesday, the Trump campaign, RNC and the Nevada GOP, as well as a state voter filed a lawsuit against the Secretary of State, a Democrat, for allowing non-citizens to vote. This is despite how, as the lawsuit emphasizes, Nevada does not allow non-citizens to vote. However, they are. Past and recent evidence shows that non-citizen registration is worsening in Nevada. But due to administrative failures, it is impossible to know the full extent of the problem, the lawsuit warns. We have discovered evidence of thousands of non-citizens of Nevada's voter rolls who may be able to cast ballots in November, the RNC announced, warned. Data from the 2020 general election reveals that 6,360 individuals listed in the DMV's non-citizen file were registered to vote. And 3,987 of these individuals cast a ballot in the 2020 election. The RNC Chair Watley sent out a tweet, "Election integrity starts with clean voter rolls." That's especially true in a state like Nevada, which automatically sends mail ballots to every active voter on the rolls. Proud of this unified GOP campaign to promote election integrity in the silver state. For those of us in the silver state, it should include everybody. You should want fair and honest elections. You should want clean voter rolls. Why aren't we getting that down the hall here in our Register of Voters office? Why aren't they doing their job? We're paying them to do their job, to ensure we have fair, honest, and secure elections, and we're not getting it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we'll go to item 17. Manager Brown?
Item 17 is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us, Manager Brown?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman? Okay, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Andriola? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks for a great meeting.